Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role and establish a quorum?
Yes, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to apply to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, December 20th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Great, thank you. Again, I want to welcome everyone that's joined us in chambers this morning and to those that may be viewing. And again, remind folks that if you do want to address the board, you're certainly welcome to do so on any item that's on our agenda or that's not on our agenda. We only ask that you please fill out a speaker slip and keep your remarks to no more than three minutes. That way, everyone has an opportunity to address the board if they so choose. So with that, let's take up our first item.
Okay, so for your consent matters, items 1 through 53, you are adopting an ordinance for item number 18 of the Sacramento County Code, Chapter 6.99.265, Title VI, relating to limited service charitable feeding operation and adding food bank fee ordinance. You waived reading on this on December 10th. For item 35, you're introducing an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 16.80 of the Sacramento County Code for the analog public facilities financing plan relating to the allocation of eligible fee credit and reimbursement amounts. You're waiving reading and continuing to January 14th, 2020 for adoption. And that concludes my notes.
Okay, very good. Any member of the board wish to pull item from consent for a separate discussion or vote? I think this time we'll work from my right and go left. So Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to pull item number 13 and continue it to 2:00 PM this afternoon, at which time we'll determine if we're able to vote on it today.
Okay, so do we need to take a separate vote now then to continue it?
No, we can just hold that.
Okay, very good. It's noted. Supervisor Peterson?
Thank you. I'd like the record to reflect on recusing myself on items 5 and 28, an abundance of caution for potential business conflict.
Thank you. Please let the record show that. Supervisor Nativi?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like to talk to item 5. Leave it on the consent calendar, but I had a question and a couple of comments on item 5, and then also some comments on item 28, so.
Item 5 and 28?
Yes.
Okay. Item 5, approve a resolution certifying 16 county of Sacramento-Melrose Community Facilities District annual reports for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019.
Okay, thank you. With contained in the material, this with the reporter, obviously, is the report and reports on the various community facilities district that we have throughout the county. In particular, I wanted to ask a question about one and make some comments about a couple of the others. The CFD 2005-1, which is our Police Services District, I noted that last year, the revenues were about 1.1 million, and yet, and that's the one that actually supports patrol services with the Sheriff's Department, and yet we only expended 800,000. So why is it we don't spend the money in the year that it comes in for police services? Again, with some of the budget stresses that we have, it would seem to me that if we're receiving the money, then we ought to budget very close to that amount, and that showed me a difference of about $300,000, which again, is not insignificant. So I guess now, as we look at budget preparation, knowing that some of those receipts don't come in until you account for them at the end of the year, we ought to budget accordingly because we're anticipating this year, I think, 1.172 million in the upcoming year. So that was my point on that.
Yeah, that's correct, and we'll keep that in mind when we budget.
Yeah, so we ought to expand whatever we take in that year. Yeah, okay. The other comment I had, it kind of goes to the item on Beachstone Lakes Point Pleasant, but two of the facilities districts here still have significant sums of money, and the reason why, again, I know I'll be, want to work with Sacramento County Executive and Chair to have some additional discussion before this board, but I would just note that with the Laguna Elliott Ranch, CFDs that we still show, and I quote from the reports, that it says, "A Lambert Road Drainage/Flood Control Facility Share Contribution." We've moved, you know, away from some of the physical facilities, but I guess I would still, that's one of the reasons I continue to press, not only because we have dollars that are set aside, but I think it's important that as we look to provide some level of additional protection for residents and property owners in those affected communities, that this money continues to reside, you know, in secure accounts, but I think it's still important. And that's why, again, I, one of the reasons I continue to press to have that discussion before this board is to see what we can do with some of that money. Lastly, I would just note, it still shows on page four of the report on Laguna Creek Ranch, Elliott Ranch, Community Facilities District Number 1, it shows for projects remaining that a streetlight at the Elk Grove Boulevard-I5 interchange, and that's been constructed. I mean, we actually did a solar light there years ago, and so I don't know why that still gets carried over as a project unless there's something else that's anticipated there. And that's actually in the city of Elk Grove now. We relinquished the control of that.
I didn't hear the first part. You mean speed light, is that?
No, street light.
Street light.
Street light, yeah.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
I think it's a safety light. I think it's actually been done. I don't know that there's ever been accounting for it. Went into the city when they annexed that Laguna West into the city, but we actually worked with Department of Transportation to put in a solar-operated safety light, street light, on the west side of that interchange. And so I guess I just wanted to make that note. Okay, thanks. And then, if we call item 28, very, you know, make a couple of comments.
Item 28, authority for the Department of Human Assistance to accept 363,000 in the Community Development Block grant funding and 269,088 in emergency solutions grant funding from the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and authority to enter into an agreement with Nextmove Homeless Services in the amount of 1,117,348,000 for the operation of the Mather Community Campus Single Adults Temporary Shelter Services effective December 17 through June 30, 2020, with the option of two-year renewals.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank our staff. I know that certainly Ann Edwards and Department of Human Assistance has worked, you know, very expeditiously over the last few months to make sure there wasn't a gap in services at the community campus. I'm supportive of this item. I just wanted to make note of two things in particular, and I appreciate that certainly Mr. Gill got back to me, as did Ms. Edwards, that we're going to continue to use the food service facility, the Cheryl Davis Dining Hall for preparation of food on-site for those that are enrolled in the program at Mather. And I think it's very important, if we have a campus atmosphere, is to have that as certainly not just a gathering place, but a place where obviously people can be a part of the food preparation. I know we are losing the job training component, and I guess I wanted to stress this morning that, you know, this is more of a temporary versus a transitional, and, you know, I certainly have, you know, iterated some of my concerns about, you know, how we're going to approach that, but I have confidence that we're going to certainly oversee the program in a way that will assist folks who are in need of shelter. But I guess I would ask that as we continue to evaluate this out there, and now that Nextmove, you know, I don't know what their capacity is. It was different than Volunteers of America who operate that program for any number of years. But I think that some of that job training, job readiness is important, and so I guess I would just ask that as we look at how this, you know, how the enrollment plays itself out, I think we anticipate 130 to, of the 140 slots will be filled at any given time. So I would just make mention of that. And lastly, I know I've spent a good deal of time with Mr. Wagstaff and certainly Ann Edwards and others, that under the previous contract, there was a substance-to-be-used drug testing protocol. I understand that's going to be different. There still will be some, you know, will be accountability, I must say, some accountability, accountability for people's conduct as a part of their housing structure out there. But I don't know what's been committed to writing, so I guess I would just ask, Bruce, is there anything relative to that with Nextmove as to how the expectation is? We're going to have a great deal more involvement with county staff. I understand that. But I think having something written behind that, because I know we, that would be important to have an understanding of how we are going to conduct that, and what would trigger that, and then, you know, what consequences, if any, would mean to those that are enrolled in programs. I think it's very important that that clean and sober aspect be, still be an important part of the overall program out there, so.
Thank you, Supervisor. We will definitely have discussions with Nextmove about that, and I'll speak with Ann about that. Your point's very well taken. Also, on the job training, you're quite right. That's a very important piece of what we've always done out there. So among other things, we're having discussions with SETA and other providers to see how we might be able to do that.
Okay, so maybe it might be coming back through the Board, Board Chair, to have, you know, at some point in time, once Nextmove, obviously, there's a transition occurring probably this moment as BOA is exiting, for at least on the single-person side of the equation, and Nextmove, so I wouldn't expect that we'd have that all up and ready to go immediately, but I think it would be helpful for all of us to know, because I know we do get questions time to time, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. That concludes remarks on consent items. Please, again, let the record show Supervisor Peters recusing on item 5 and item 28, and that we are continuing item 13 until next month.
No, until 2:00 PM.
Till 2:00 PM, okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, I have no speaker slips. Are we, is our technology working today? Okay, please vote. Oh, wait, is there motion?
Motion.
Chair will second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you.
Item 54 is the presentation of resolution recognizing Robert B. Leonard upon the occasion of his retirement after 32 years of service with Sacramento County.
Yeah, I believe Supervisor Peters is going to present.
You can't get away with sitting over there. We have a big moment today. Rob Leonard is retiring after 32 years of service with Sacramento County. He started in 1987 at the county and worked his way up the career ladder to Chief Operating Officer for the Sacramento County Airport System, and also the Director of the Military Base Conversion for Sacramento County for nine years overseeing the reuse planning and conversion of Mather and McClellan Air Force Base, which is where I met you from my earlier career. And then he became the Director of Economic Development and Intergovernmental Affairs, where he worked with many companies to grow in the Sacramento region. He was appointed as Deputy County Executive for the Municipal Services Agency in 2011, and helped guide the South County Habitat Conservation Plan to completion after nearly 20 years of effort. That was a seminal moment, getting it approved. And also participated in the construction of Terminal B and other projects at the International Airport, oversaw Sacramento County Regional Parks and Animal Care through hard economic times. Rob's hard work has been exemplary in every position he's held in the county, and he's served on the Sacramento Area Commerce and Trade Organization, Sacramento Convention and Visitors Bureau, Sacramento Sports Commission, Sacramento Regional Sports Education Foundation, and the Aerospace Museum of California. And he's earned the respect of his peers, associates in the community he served. He's a man of integrity and is known for making the right decisions at the right time. He's also the father of two children, Claire and Kate, and he will be traveling and enjoying the outdoors with his wife, Div, and is also planning to spend his retirement restoring old automobiles. Please don't get any code enforcement calls to me at my office, okay?
[laughing]
Restoring old automobiles and riding on his bicycle and motorcycle, and I think you're off to take your oldest on a college tour here pretty soon, too. So congratulations on all those things, and the Board is recognizing your time with the county with much appreciation. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Supervisor Peters, appreciate your comments. I've stood at this podium many times over the years on a variety of different subjects, wide range of different subjects, and some of those experiences were really good, and the outcomes were good, and some of them weren't so, weren't so good.
[laughing]
Today's different, though. You know, I've, over the years, I've seen my counterparts, people who I admired and respected, you know, stand here for their last comments, and it's, you know, it's me. This is, this is really different. And I'm standing here today with gratitude to the county, to the Board, to the executive leadership team, everybody in the organization that I've had the opportunity to work with, and those that I haven't, quite frankly, for all the good work that the county does. And then also, in my time, I've had a tremendous opportunity to work with the people that live in the county on different projects, different things related to the airport, the military bases, regional parks, for example, and have really enjoyed my opportunity to engage with the community, to do good things for Sacramento County. I'm very grateful for these opportunities and the challenges as they've been presented to me, and very, very proud also of our accomplishments, not just mine, but everything was something that we really did together. Even today's agenda, for example, there are things that I was directly involved with, either most recently or perhaps in the past. And so, for example, the continuing advancement of the Orange Vale Library, and we're close, but there's still things to be done, and I'm really, really pleased to see that advancing. The East Taxway work at International Airport, one of those projects that had a few bumps in the road, but was pleased to have the opportunity to see it come to closure, to deal with some pretty complex and sensitive issues out there.
You and me both.
For me?
You and me both.
Yes, for a lot of reasons there. And then Metro Air Park. There are a whole collection of things on the agenda today for Metro Air Park. Now, these, you know, it's really reflective of my experience in the past and my engagement in the past, and Steve and the team, and Troy Givens and the team have done just a great job continuing to bring that forward. During my tenure here with the county, and prior to joining the county, I had the opportunity to work with a lot of really smart and successful people, and I learned things from all of them. A lot of you sitting here in the chambers today, both how to deal with things, how to open my mind and look at things differently, and then also, quite frankly, I learned how not to deal with some things, too. You learn, you learn both ways.
[laughing]
And, you know, one of the people, and I appreciate Susan's comments this morning on her mention of the time that we first met and started working together, because one of the people that was, I considered a friend and a mentor, was Peter McEwen. You know, that was a wild time for the county, a wild time for me. Pete would both provide encouragement and kick me in the tail.
What?
Yeah. He was very open with letting me know, you know, what we were doing well and where he thought we were coming up short. And I really appreciated that, so I wanted to acknowledge that.
I'll honor that.
Yes. And so, it's also important for me to acknowledge my wife, Div, and Claire and Kate, who are such a part of my life and have provided a lot of encouragement in terms of what I do, and then also yelling at me saying, "Why are you paying attention to that now? You need to be here with us." So, appreciate that. And then also, you know, my parents, my mom and dad, who were tremendously supportive over the years, and my mom, who has now moved here to Sacramento. So with that, I'm excited about the future for my family and me as we move forward into this next chapter. And as I mentioned at the Department Heads Meeting, when I announced my plans, I'm really excited about the future for the county. There are a lot of big things, a lot of big opportunities that are available for us. You've got a great senior leadership team and great organization to take care of those details, and so I really look forward to moving forward, seeing the organization move forward and the challenges that come. So, thank you.
Thank you. Give you a hug.
Sure. Don't go anywhere, Rob. Don't go anywhere. We have others up here that want to offer their comments. I know both Supervisors, Nativi and Frost, wish to do so, but I'm going to go ahead and take Chair's prerogative and say a few words now myself. First of all, I'd like to express my thanks to you. One of the things that, I mean, 32 years with any organization is pretty remarkable. So I think the fact that you've given Mr. Nativi a run for his money is something to behold. But one of the things that many people may not realize is that, you know, Sacramento County is fairly unique among the 58 in the state in terms of how much urbanized territory we have in the unincorporated area. In fact, you know, we sometimes jest that the unincorporated county is the largest city in the county with nearly 600,000 people. And it takes, I'm sure as Supervisor Peters can attest especially, it takes quite a lot of careful management to make sure that we're not just doing what is expected of us in terms of how all counties are expected in the state of California to provide county-wide services, but on top of that, to make sure that our roadways are getting the attention they deserve, our parkways are getting the attention they deserve, that we have a robust economic development agenda, that we're entrepreneurial in spirit when we attempt to problem solve. And you've been at the forefront of that spirit, quite frankly, and I think, you know, I've only been here going on nine years. Others have certainly been here a lot longer than I have and have seen you progress through your various titles, but I just want to offer my thanks, even though I may not have a lot of that urbanized territory in my, the unincorporated part of the district I represent. Your help with the American River Parkway, for instance, which I know you have a great deal of passion for and a lot of focus on over the years, has been very much appreciated by me and my staff, and certainly by the constituents we represent in District 1. So I just wanted to offer those remarks, and I want to wish you well in your retirement. I know you enjoy the outdoors, and you have a lot to do with your family that you've probably postponed for a number of years, so I'm sure you're looking forward to that, and we wish you well. And with that, I have Supervisor Nativi in the queue.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Rob, I will certainly add to the comments this morning, obviously with, you know, a great deal of appreciation and thanks for your dedication to public service, but I think the, you know, the breadth and depth of some of the things you worked on, obviously, are hallmarks in your career, but I think also show the, your ability to come into situations often that were in need of attention, but certainly the ability to apply your, you know, your experience, your talents as it relates to, obviously, being a problem solver and someone who I think, you know, exhibits a good organizational skills, but also the ability to, you know, many times to think outside the box. And I think back certainly even prior to my election to this Board, because I'm, you know, obviously 32 years, and working with my predecessor, but someone who I think considered you not only a good friend, but certainly appreciated your, again, your skill set, and that was Toby Johnson. I know that you had a chance to work with him on airport-related matters earlier in your career with the county. And, you know, you didn't miss a beat, obviously, with the base conversion activities, both Mather and McClellan, but I know that you and I got a chance to travel on a few occasions, to meet with Air Force personnel in some of the early days of closure and reuse planning for Mather. And I think, again, your expertise, both in airport management, but also, I think, in the economic development realm, really assisted this county, and I think it was, you know, detailed, obviously, in the comments that Supervisor Peters made, as it related to, you know, early wins, some of the early frustrations, some that may even linger today, because I think back, you know, we're 26, going on 27 years post-closure, and all the planning that goes in post-closure of Mather, and, you know, all the successes. But some of the early wins, I, you know, obviously you were very instrumental in the $10 million EDA grant that brought, you know, some of the initial improvements there as the base was being considered for reuse. Obviously, your work with Peter and Susan in McEwen Companies at the time, and just the general oversight, working with parks and with transportation and airports and, you know, the Rancho Nevada community, and a whole lot of folks who had some pretty wild propositions for reuse. As you would recall, everything from a NASCAR track to a federal prison to a 50-story hotel, and the, you know, story goes on and on and on, and you filled in a lot of those, I think, initial thoughts and were helpful in putting together a plan that obviously both at Mather-McLellan with a lot of team members here at the county and others in the private sector have really proved to be, I think, models, as pointed out in the resolution, for successful base reuse and conversion. And I can give you a lot of credit for your leadership in that realm. Obviously, more recently, with the municipal services aspect, you're, you know, you really took on, as we all do, learning about water and some of the efforts to make sure that this county and its people and its landscape are protected. And again, I appreciated your expertise in that regard, certainly your support for folks and a lot of resources, but also with the Executive's Office and making sure that this Board and certainly this county was, you know, clearly heard on matters that were of and continue to be of concern to our community. And I would just say, too, that you've always been a real steady hand when it comes to, I think, you know, thinking through issues and assisting in problems. I know you've fielded phone calls, probably as you have from others on this Board, on weekends and evenings, and I want to thank you for your work in the animal care area. I know that was an area that you certainly got real familiar with, and I, you know, and I'm certainly, I, you know, prodded you at times, but I appreciate your efforts and your dedication in so many ways. But, you know, I could go on and on and on, but I think you've certainly lent, you know, a good deal of your life, certainly your professional life, to serving the people of this county, and for that, I'm grateful, and I know they're grateful as well. And I want to acknowledge your contributions, and I know that, obviously, there's a big world ahead in relation to retirements, certainly with family and some of your other interests. And I want to just thank you for your good work, for your, obviously, your friendship over the years, and for your dedication to making this a better place for all of us. And so, I want to wish you well. Godspeed, Rob, to you and your family.
Thank you, Don. Supervisor Frost?
Hi, Rob. I just want to tell you that the District 14 holds you in very high regard. We have all really enjoyed working with you. We've appreciated your leadership and your vision, and the way you sincerely listen to what we're trying to accomplish. And you somehow have this analytical ability to go through all those papers and get to the heart of, okay, this is where we can get to the heart of this problem and solve it. And I'll never forget, one of my promises when I got elected was that I would help Orange Vale get a bigger library, a better library. And because of you and Britt and your team, we worked for three years on that. It was a long time coming, and there were four supervisors before me who did several terms, who tried to get a better library for Orange Vale. And thanks to the Library Authority working so well with us, we were able to figure that out. But I attribute it to your vision and your tenacity, and you just weren't, we weren't going to stop until we got it, and it looks like we're almost there, so I'm very excited, and I want to thank you for that. The community wants to thank you. And I want you to know that I will personally miss working with you. I'll miss your smile, even when we're talking about tense topics. You have a smile on your face, and that's so wonderful. And I hope that you have a wonderful retirement with your family, and I hope that you're able to go to the quiet and actually deal with it, because you're probably not used to that.
Yeah.
That, I imagine, is going to be hard. But I wish you all the best and God's richest blessings in your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Thanks again, Rob.
Thanks.
Item 55 is the 2020 federal and state legislative priorities.
Hey, stranger.
Hi, I'm back. Good morning, Chair, Members of the Board. Natasha Dren, Governmental Relations and Legislative Officer. Before you today are your proposed 2020 federal and state legislative priorities. I'd like to briefly summarize the proposed substantive changes included in Attachment 1. On page 5 and 12, Pages 5 and 12, we've updated the federal and state water sections to change the name to reflect the new proposed single tunnel project in the Delta formerly known as California Water Fix. On page 9, we updated the language in the Health and Human Services Section relating to Title 4E to reflect support for legislative efforts to transition counties to the Family First Act. On page 12, we've added language in the Park Section indicating support for trail connectivity through park systems. And finally, on page 15, we've added a new section titled Coroner Services. The county's coroner, Kim Jin, was involved in helping with mass fatality events this past year. This experience fatality events this past year. This experience gave her an understanding that funding for training for these types of events is needed, as well as multidisciplinary teams to respond to these kinds of events. So this summarizes the proposed changes, and staff is recommending approval of this item. I've also asked your state legislative advocate, Steve Cruz, to be here, too, to help with any of your questions. So.
Okay. Thank you, Natasha.
Yep.
Any questions for staff or our consultant? Supervisor Frost.
I just want to thank you, Natasha, for pulling all this together and for making it so easy to understand the changes that you're making. There were a couple of items that I wanted to go on record as opposing. I want, in general, I want to support the package, but there are a couple of items, and I've probably done this before, that I do not support. And so I have all, I can just read through them quickly. Item two, general state and federal priorities, item two B, number eight and nine. Eight is supporting legislation that provides sufficient revenue for county services. And supporting, nine is supporting legislation that provides sufficient revenues for fund caseload growth in the state mandated programs. Some of these are because they're vague in nature, and I would need more information to know if I would support it. And so I want to go on record. I have this in writing, so you don't, I can give it to you.
Okay.
And some of them are because I don't support. Item three, federal priorities, C, transportation, 2A, which is support enhanced revenues to keep highway users trust fund solvent. This includes support for an increase and/or index of the federal gas tax. Item four, state priorities, major county programs and issues, one, public safety and administration of justice, item I, in the context of bail reform. I need more information on that to know how I would, what position I would take and if I would support. And then item 18, transportation, number B, item B, support the preservation of existing funding sources dedicated to transportation, including Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, SB 1. I did not support SB 1. And I have this, I have this typed up, if that makes it easier for you.
Yeah, great.
So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I don't have anyone signed up to speak. I'll just offer these comments. First, I want to thank you, Natasha, and Steve, and Bruce. You've got, you and I got a little roped into working on the Family First issue late in the year. But I just want to note, for the public's benefit, how important it is for us to be very, very thoughtful about where we place our advocacy and how we work through some very talented staff to ensure that, especially when it comes to supporting measures that enhance revenue for this county. I mean, counties unlike other local governments, whether they be municipalities or school districts even, really rely on the partnerships that we enjoy with state and federal government and certainly the revenues derived therefrom to carry out the service delivery that's expected by our constituents. So it's really, it's very, very important that we're carefully, not just monitoring legislative initiatives at both at the state and federal level, that we're speaking with a forceful voice, sometimes independently, but more often than not collectively with other counties in the state of California through our associations, both CSAC and at the national level through NACO. So I just wanted to publicly thank our staff for the great job that they do in that regard. Mr. Natoli.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. Just a couple of quick items on, actually on page six, I guess it's the strike through relates to, the floodplain management portions, Natasha.
Page six of Attachment 1 Supervisor?
Yeah, Attachment 1. I guess they're saying, this was just a strike through where we actually.
Okay.
So.
Oh, yes.
One, I'll come back to sub Ds and E, but I wanted, three under that where it says South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. Says support and request assistance to acquire federal regulatory approval for the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. I think we actually have done that.
Yes.
So I think we, I think you can cross that off the list.
Yes, let's update that.
Which is a good thing. And then, just backing up, though, to under the floodplain management, I'm curious as to whether there are any legislative initiatives, because this has been on, we've been carrying, for example, D, where we advocate and support changes in the National Flood Insurance Program and Federal Emergency Management Regulations, which would allow for replacement of and reinvestment in existing agricultural structures and operations in the floodplain without requiring elevation of floodproofing. You know, I've kind of lost track of that. I know that we've been, had worked with our federal legislative delegation on those things. And also then E, with, you know, efforts to provide access to affordable flood insurance for property and business owners in the county, including agriculture and legacy communities, which continue to be, I think, significantly impacted. And, you know, the changes that occurred a couple of years ago that, I guess, bought a little bit of time relative to the insurance premiums. In fact, I've had some recent conversations on two occasions now with folks who just purchased their home outright without flood insurance because, you know, didn't have, you know, either the cost of and/or didn't have it previously. And so I guess I would just ask, and maybe as a follow-on, I know that we continue to carry this on our legislative agenda, but, you know, where we are, and if there's something else that we can do to maybe ramp up efforts against, these are, you know, national policies, obviously. So what we think about things here in Sacramento County don't necessarily influence the rest of the country legislatively. But I think we have some allies in this regard. So I guess I would just ask that we maybe have some follow-on with our, either federal and our state legislative folks to know where we're at. And if there's something else we can do that with either bills, we obviously we indicate support, but we might re-energize around that a bit. I think it would be helpful. And particularly, we got the National Heritage Area Designation for the Delta. Our legacy communities, again, have, I think, have organized both in this county, but also in other Delta counties, and certainly have been advocating for economic reinvestment. But part of what I think will be a barrier in the future are some of the things that are listed that we either support or advocate for. So I guess I'd like to maybe see what we could do around those particular elements, recognizing, obviously, we're just a piece of the much, much larger pie on those.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Great. Okay, I have no one signed up to speak on this item. Is there a motion? Or do we need to take that?
Do you want to do two separate ones, since Sue's out on a number of them?
What's the best way to do this?
I don't, I don't think we took a separate motion the last time. It's, we'll just note it in the record that she's.
Sure. Yeah.
I'll move the item.
Okay, it's been moved by Supervisor Peters, seconded by Supervisor Frost. Please vote.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you.
Next.
Item 56, the annual reports for the County of Sacramento Development Impact Fee Programs for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, and resolutions making necessary Government Code Section 66001 findings with respect to each development impact fee program.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Bob Davison, the Division Chief of the County Engineering Division. And this is a receive-and-file item for annual reports for 14 development impact fee programs. These reports are required by the Government Code to be reviewed by the board at the end of, before the end of the year for the, following the fiscal year for which they're reporting. And these reports are reporting, are annual reports for fiscal year 2018, 2019. The reports include annual reports for the eight infill park district and county infill areas, plan area fees, including the Vineyard, the North Vineyard Station, the Mather and the Antelope Fee Programs, also for the countywide library fee, and the Consumers Community Services District Fire Fee. Also included in this item are seven resolution-making Government Code required five-year findings for these 14 programs. Those, by virtue of their name, five-year findings, that's a portion that's on this item about every five years. So it wasn't on last year's annual report item. But those findings are important, and today's actions are making those findings as well. Included in each report are the required reporting items, including the amount of the fee, the beginning balance, the amount of the fees collected, interest, public improvement expenditures, and then the ending fund balance. I'm not going to go into the details of the reports, but certainly can answer questions. I will point out some highlights. The Elk Grove Floren Project from Gerbert Floren, including the bridge at Elder Creek, it will be out to construction shortly in the near future. And it's a project that should take about a year and a half to build. And it's funded by three of these programs, the Vineyard, the North Vineyard Station, as well as a Floren Vineyard Program, which there's no need to report for because it was adopted after the fiscal year that we're reporting. But it'll certainly be part of next year's items. But it's an important part of funding that project as well. And that project is funded 60% by these programs and 40% by other funding, including federal funding. The Antelope area, the report shows not much activity, but with the update of the facilities financing plan about a year ago, and with the Barrett Development poised to take off, we expect significant activity in Antelope over the next several years, including the developers constructing improvements to Antelope Road, Don Julio Road, including the intersection at Poker Lane, and a significant turnkey park improvement that will be provided by that development. In the Mather Fee Program, there is a Douglas Road Extension design that is going to be put forward by Department of Transportation. They'll be working on a preliminary alignment study and then hopefully moving forward with a CEQA and NEPA clearance. And they have other sources, but the Mather Fee Program will be contributing $300,000 to this effort. The library fee program, I heard a lot of discussion about the Orangevale Library today. So the library fee programs happens to be a funding source for the, funding the lease for the expand, for the long-term lease for the expansion of the Orangevale Library. And there are eight infill park districts with several miscellaneous improvements constructed throughout those areas. And I won't go into those in detail, but they're all reported here in the annual report. And with that, that's my presentation. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Bob. Any questions for staff? Supervisor Natoli.
Just a quick one on the Mather Public Facilities Financing Plan. So we showed a beginning fund balance for, actually ending fund balance in that fund for almost $690,000 at the end of the 1819 fiscal year. And you said $300,000 was going to be expended on the Douglas. And so that will still leave a balance of roughly almost $400,000, or almost $400,000 in the fund.
That's correct.
What's contemplated for that, Bob? What are, what is either transportation or what is being contemplated for the remaining portion of that?
So right now, there's no active plan for that money, but it's available for any of the projects, you know, that are tied to the Mather Fee Program and the Mather Financing Plan. So that's something that we'll have to work with, certainly with the board and the Department of Transportation, on, you know, how to best utilize those fundings. But at this point, there is no call on that right now.
Yeah. Well, and again, I'm very pleased. I know I had a briefing last week, a meeting with Troy, and Rick Carter was there from Transportation, that, you know, we're advancing the Douglas Road Extension Studies, as you said, and the work, the CEQA work, which I guess is contemplated to be about $450,000 plus or minus. So I guess my follow-on question then is, if we have a remaining fund balance, I know that Economic Development had a list a few years back, and I imagine they've maintained that list with some infill road projects, commitments to do some additional curb gutter and sidewalk, as well as some other improvements, you know, adjacent to airport properties and so forth. Is it contemplated that we would use, and could we use that money to do those? I can think of, you know, a couple in particular where actually we either sold property or whatever, and part of, you know, we retained some commitment to do, do some of those improvements.
So I haven't had any recent discussions with Economic Development about that, but I'd be happy to.
Yeah. I'm not saying run the fund down to zero, but it gets replenished annually with some collections here. So I guess I'd be curious, is that, you know, those projects are getting cheaper to do. So I see Steve kind of looking behind you there now, so.
Yeah, he.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yes, Supervisor Natoli, we are working with Economic Development and Department of Airports to look at some other potential recommendations for the remaining funding. But as you said, we didn't want to take it all the way down to zero with this specific project. But with the combination of the $300,000 from the Mather Program and funding that Transportation has available, we're advancing the preliminary design, the alignment, as you know, kind of has to be threaded through some needles there to get that figured out exactly where that can go, and then do the environmental processing on that, on that extension. As far as the other projects, yeah, we're working together kind of right now to gather what projects might be eligible for this funding and where that might be the highest priorities and have that discussion with the board to determine if those are, in fact, the priorities.
Okay. Yes, I know $400,000 may not go very far, but there are some small pieces that, if I recall, some of the amounts were close. At least you could fund one or two of those projects potentially over the next couple of years. So.
That's right.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a question for county council. And it may amount to a suggestion by the end of the dialogue here. But remind me again, is there a statutory time limit, Lisa, in terms of when we begin collecting impact fees and the time that they have to be spent on, for the purpose for which they were collected?
The statutory timeline is 60 days from enactment that you can start collecting them, because the ordinance only goes into effect after 60 days. As far as the timeline, I'd have to go back and look at the statute, which I can do today and get back to you. I do know there's requirements, as you know, today, what we're doing is the annual report and then the five-year lookout. So I don't know the exact timeline, and I'm not sure if there is one, but I can get back to you on that.
The suggestion I'm leaning towards, Bob, is this. I note in the annual report that there's a section called refund that you note at the end of each different type of impact fee. But what I don't get a sense of is if, let's say the statutory time limit is, I'm just throwing it out there, 10 years. If we've been collecting a set of impact fees or a particular impact fee for so many years, and the improvement for which the fee was collected in the first place has not been initiated, hasn't been completed, what the report doesn't tell me is how close we are up against that timeline to get the improvement done. And so that would be helpful in the future, moving forward, to understand where we are in that regard. I know that in the past, for instance, the, this is back in the late 90s, BIA of the Bay Area actually did basically an audit or an assessment across the nine counties of the Bay Area to look at what local governments were collecting and whether or not they were expending the impact fees timely to actually mitigate the impacts of new growth. And in many instances, they found that those local governments were not spending them in a timely fashion and, in fact, had owed back to various members of the development community millions of dollars. So I don't want us to get into a similar situation. And I know that much of that is, perhaps all of it, is dictated by Government Code 66,000. So I think it would be good to maybe add that to kind of the set of information that we get rarely on the status of impact fees.
So I'm looking really quickly at 66,001, or 6601. In the five-year report, that requirement, what you just outlined, is something that we're required to do in the every five years. It's to determine how much has been collected, how much is left to be expended, and the approximate time of that expenditure.
Right. And that's that last part that I'm just not seeing here, is how much, like, what, you know, the clock.
This is the annual report, so that's probably why. This isn't the five-year required report. As far as I know, Bob can correct me if I'm wrong.
So it doesn't sound like it's required by law, but it nonetheless, I think, would be of value for us to know that annually.
Correct. We'll do that.
Great. Okay. No one sign up to speak on this? This is a receive-and-file. Any further questions for staff? If not, we'll move on. Next item, please.
Item 57, approve a credit and reimbursement policy for transportation projects under the Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee and Transit Impact Fee Program, and approve the 2019 update of the program, next to study and fees.
You looking to raise the podium?
Yes.
Yes. There we go.
Good morning, Chair and Board. I'm Rick Carter with the Department of Transportation. I mentioned the item before, you were looking for approval of the credit and reimbursement policy for the SCTDF, and to approve an update of the NEXUS study and an update of the fee. It's largely related to those policy changes. Going to go over, kind of highlight some of the key points of the policy. The policy addresses the SCTDF capital fund only. It's, there's not a policy for the TIF portion of the fund. We think it's unlikely that we will have anyone doing work that is creditable or reimbursable under the TIF, because that's the transit portion of the fee. In addition, we think it's unlikely to have anyone build projects that are funded with grants or Measure A, that's likely to be done by the county. If it were done, we'd handle those individually within the agreement. Eligible costs include construction right-of-way and soft costs. The costs are limited to the values set forth in the NEXUS study, less any amount in a finance district overlap. The NEXUS document doesn't include the overlap amounts, those are handled in separate documents, so the policy recognizes that those need, that those adjustments need to be made. Policy requires documentation of the costs to substantiate them. It also allows for balancing of costs between projects over a four-year period. So a project comes in high, another project comes in low, those can be balanced out. Kind of the meat of the change is really within the right-of-way and the frontage. The code allows credit or reimbursement for right-of-way that is dedicated at the time of construction. Traditionally, the SCTDF has not allowed credit or reimbursement for that right-of-way. However, with the last adoption, there are detailed estimates for right-of-way, and so the fees include those right-of-way costs. So we thought it was appropriate that they would be compensated for the costs since they're paying those fees. What the policy does is limit it to the greenfield cost that's in the program. That's the vacant land cost, so we don't end up with issues arguing over appraised values. It's the fee amount set in the program, so that's the recommendation in terms of reimbursement. What the policy also allows for is right-of-way to be credited if it's required to be acquired. An example, that might be a logical segment where perhaps there's a single-family home within that stretch that doesn't have frontage. If they need to acquire that land, we'd work out fair and reasonable value. The last bullet is regarding frontage. The SCTDF assumes in the underdeveloped areas that the property owner will fund and construct the frontage improvements. However, when you look in areas, a lot of Vineyard, along the Jackson Corridor, stuff in Alberta, there are isolated parcels that were developed some years ago that have no frontage, single-family homes, occasional businesses. The NEXUS study currently does not include anything that would allow for funding of that frontage work to be done. So we've made changes that if we require that frontage to be built on essentially someone else's parcel, then there's a mechanism in order to pay for that. Credit terms, we've proposed a 70% fee reduction for a priority facility. Those facilities being projects listed in the TIPG and the CIP, or already operating at a level of Service F prior to development coming in. Non-priority facilities would get a credit up to 35%. The balance of the fee would be paid into the SCTDF that would allow for the county to construct county priority projects, or also fund reimbursements. However, we have proposed an incentive that all facilities be considered a priority over the next eight years. Last item is if the property owner is looking to take their credits before they have completed construction of the transportation facilities, they have to bond for it, which is a kind of a standard condition in all the finance districts. Key points on the reimbursements, owners are eligible for reimbursement if their costs exceed what they've been allotted in credits. Reimbursements would be on a first-come, first-served basis, based on acceptance of the project. Funds would be set aside for reimbursement as part of the annual budget. The Department would make recommendations on that amount, considering the anticipated revenues in the SCTDF, likely reimbursements, the need for county-built projects. The Board letter notes that our sort of goal for that is 20% of the anticipated revenue of each year.
I'm going to interrupt. Supervisor Peters has a question.
Thank you. On the reimbursements being first-come, first-served, and based on a budget that you have, do those people that don't get a full reimbursement, those people or projects, stay first in line until the next year's budget comes up?
Yes.
Okay. Do you anticipate that being a common action, or?
We, we hope not. It's really going to be dependent on the pace of development and the size of the projects that come in and where they come in, because of the, a lot of the development is tied in with the finance districts, where the funding is in the finance districts.
I can't hear you, Rick.
I'm sorry. A lot of the, a lot of the development is set up right now in finance districts, where most of the SCTDF funding has actually been shifted into the finance districts. So I don't anticipate large amounts of projects actually coming in under the SCTDF, because so much of it's in the finance districts, but, but there could be. And part of that would be looking at the annual, when we propose an amount for reimbursement, looking at the revenues and what's outstanding, what we anticipate coming in, and making those adjustments.
Okay. But they will stay in line for the next year's?
Yeah. When the project's accepted, they get in line.
Thank you.
Then, last item is, after the project's accepted, they've got a four-year time period to get their documentation in for the credits and reimbursements. The credits wouldn't expire or anything, it's just a kind of requirement to not, not allow them to wait forever to submit documentation.
And then back to my earlier question, sorry. They're not going to go off a list after four years or anything like that?
They would not.
There's no time limit?
There's no time limit. The point for this, my prior employer had no deadline, and they had companies that went bankrupt, and they carried a liability infinitely, never, that liability never went, As I know we have cost, as I notice we have cost revisions to the NEXUS study, so this slide shows what those included. We noticed some inconsistencies as we started working with the numbers, so we corrected some frontage inconsistencies. We included a frontage allowance that I just spoke to for the existing parcels, if the developer is required to build on an adjacent parcel. We did discover there was a few spreadsheet errors where there were items that didn't sum correctly, and that's what that third bullet is, and we fixed those costs. As I noted earlier, we removed right-of-way costs for internal roads. We also caught a couple of errors with overlapping distances between roadway segments and intersections on a handful of projects, and we received three grants from SECOG, so those, all those changes went into the updated NEXUS study that revised the costs. With that, there's a new fee schedule. The combined effect of all the changes is reduction across the board, most of it fairly minor, the largest is in District 3, largely due to the removal of the internal road right-of-way.
These are not supervisory districts.
These are not supervisory, they are.
Let me declare.
Yes, they are fee districts. So the slide shows the changes in the six fee districts, there's also reductions to the special finance districts as well. Because these are fee reductions, they don't have a 30-day waiting requirement that we normally have with fee increases. As such, we're proposing they go into effect January 1st, to give staff time to get it into the computer system. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Would you have some questions? Supervisor Nativi?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rick, a question would fall in the fee district, probably District 4, I guess. The changes, I think we contemplated that the relinquishment of Jackson Highway, again, that's still a pending, probably going to be a long pending item. Does that affect the calculations as it relates to requirements? Because as long as it's under Caltrans jurisdiction, there are, those standards, again, are fairly comparable to ours, but I know one of the reasons we saw relinquishment was to do complete streets and to employ some different distances between potential signals as development occurred and so forth. Has there been any recalibration, recognizing that's not in the immediate foreseeable future as to costs associated with the Jackson Highway, particularly the frontage improvements, but all the main intersections?
There has not been any, any recalculation or reconsider of changing the proposed projects along the Jackson Corridor regarding relinquishment. The, the discussions that have been had with Caltrans were not expecting any significant change to what the projects might look like, whether the state relinquished that to the county or not.
Okay, that's just, that's a little different than I understood, because again, one of the reasons, as I said in my comment a moment ago, that we were thinking relinquishment was that with the complete streets, that we might be able to do some other things as it relates to whether it's curb cuts or adjacency of, you know, bike lanes and such, and so, again, that gets down to a fairly, you know, finite level of detail, but nonetheless, I'm just kind of curious that, I guess, so it's going to be the same whether it's under their jurisdiction or ours?
I, I will look to, if I look to our director, my, my understanding was we didn't have a big.
Good morning. Ron Bakary, Director of Transportation. There is not a change in what we plan to build on Highway 16. It's just that if we relinquish the effort, prior to relinquishment, we'll work through Caltrans. We still plan on proposing the same roadway that will accommodate the development.
Exact same?
Yes.
Because I, again, maybe I misunderstood, but I mean, in meetings, certainly prior to, you know, working with Mike Penrose and so forth, because I went to some of those meetings with folks talking about it, and you know, that was one of the, if I recall, was a bullet point about how, you know, allowed us to have some flexibility as it relates to street design, recognizing you still got, you know, a four, six-lane designation with, you know, but that the Caltrans standards would dictate potentially either higher speeds and/or some, again, if I misunderstood it, then I'll stand corrected, but that's not what I understood, and Ron, there were some distinguishing factors, as I recall.
Yeah. The Caltrans on that, on Highway 16, looks to the locals for what they're trying to accomplish. We do feel that, and some of the bullet points as we move forward with that process, was that it would be easier for us to move through the, through the process without running everything through Caltrans, but prior to relinquishment, we'll just apply, and we work through Caltrans all the time. So it'll be a similar process that we're used to. We're still going to pursue what it is that best serves that development and best serves the county, and, and nothing will change as far as what we propose as, as the roadway is concerned.
Supervisor Nativi, if I could add, Caltrans has been pretty reasonable in some discussions we've had with them about the likely requests that we would have for the corridor, and so while it's still under their jurisdiction, they would still work with us on what we would like to build out there. Part of the, the value of the relinquishment would be that we wouldn't have to have that extra time associated with going through Caltrans and having their review.
Okay.
So that, that's what we, that's, that's why the, the fee program itself is anticipating the same roadways that we would have done with or without relinquishment.
Okay, thanks. Well, I've got you there, then, just on a specific element of that, you know, it's, it's either going to have fee district or, or some other funding source, but that intersection at Bradshaw at Jackson, the westbound approach, we, you know, we've done some of the southbound with the smud project, south to west. Where are we with that? Because I know we had to work through the Caltrans process, but it is desperately needed to have, you know, an auxiliary turn lane for west to northbound movements of Jackson Highway to Bradshaw, and I assume we're going to have to fund that, and so where are we, Ron, with that?
So we do have staff working on a solution to that. We've also met with Caltrans to let them know that we are in the process of looking at that, and so as we start to finish the preliminary engineering, we'll be working with Caltrans to figure out a solution.
Do you have a timeframe?
You know, I do think that over the next five or six months, we'll, we'll have kind of settled in on what can be done.
Okay. I'm glad you said months, I was, I was sitting on the edge of my chair, I thought I was going to say years.
And we'll be looking at, we're also looking at the permanent solution, but, but looking at what we can do in the interim.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? I have no one sign up to speak on this item. I know that Supervisor Peters wants to make a statement about how best to separate various aspects of this action item so that she can avoid a potential conflict.
Thank you. I'd like to move the item, accepting all of the roads in Mather. Here.
Is that clear enough for the record? Okay. Chair, Chair will second that. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present, and that the record reflect that this is approving the item except for all of the roads in the Mather, listed under Mather, and we'll go to the, to the record and actually make sure that those are listed.
Okay, you don't need a seventh motion?
You don't need a second vote, then, for the balance?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Okay, I'd move the balance.
Okay. It's been moved by Supervisor Nativi, seconded by Supervisor Frost. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Very good, thank you.
And as modest as it may be, let the record show, this is a fee reduction.
Modest is the right word.
Yeah, very modest.
But it's going in the right direction.
That's your cue, back there. Okay. Next item, please.
Okay. So for item 58, this is the performance of the Sacramento County Mental Health System Report.
This is a little high for me.
It can be lowered and, you know.
Thank you. This one, this one, this one. Good morning, Chair and members. I'm Ann Arneal, Chair of the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. I'd like to thank you for having me here today to present our report on the performance of county mental health services. This report was prepared to fulfill one of our statutory mandates. We have prepared a rather extensive report, which I think you have in your materials. Today, I'm going to cover six specific topics that are outlined here for you. We did cover mobile crisis support teams, but since you approved six additional teams last month, I don't believe I need to talk to you about the effectiveness of these programs. I think you're well aware of that. So we'll move on to the Triage Navigator Program. The purpose of this program is to reduce unnecessary incarceration and psychiatric hospitalization. In fiscal year, these programs are located in the main jail, at Loaves and Fishes, and at six hospitals in their emergency rooms. In fiscal year 1718, for clients who these programs were able to link to outpatient services, hospitalization was decreased by 36.7%, which shows that these programs were very effective in accomplishing their goals. These programs also have many qualitative benefits for clients. They help clients navigate to their first outpatient appointment, they can assist clients in picking up their medication, applying for housing, and other benefits. So they are very effective in assisting clients. In terms of inpatient services provided by the hospitals in the county, you can see the volume of services provided to adults and children. For inpatient hospitalization, the 30-day rehospitalization rate is 20.4% for children the 30-day rehospitalization rate is 20.4 percent. For children, it's 9.7 percent. The 30-day rehospitalization rate for adults is consistent with the research literature for persons with serious mental illness. That research literature reports that for mood disorders, the rate is 15 percent, and for persons with schizophrenia, it's 22 percent. So you can see that that 20.4 percent rate is well within the realm of rehospitalization for folks with serious mental illness. We can't comment on the children's rehospitalization rate because we could not find a benchmark within the research literature. Regarding full-service partnerships in the Mental Health Services Act, these are programs provided for persons who are at risk of homelessness or incarceration. There are excellent outcomes for the indicators that are listed on the slide here. There is a need to improve employment outcomes. Those outcomes were maintained for 13 percent of the partners, but for only 2.5 percent of the partners was there a gain in employment. Employment is actually very important because only 90, because 90 percent of clients in California are unemployed. Our recommendation is that the Division Behavioral Health Services work with full-service partnership providers to increase the emphasis on vocational services. The timeliness of services is one area where we believe there is need for substantial improvement in the county. The Department of Healthcare Services has benchmarks of seven, 14, and 30 calendar days for various types of outpatient services. Sacramento County is significantly out of compliance for meeting these benchmarks for children and adults, and there is a serious risk of adverse consequences for clients. These risks include lack of access to medications, worsening of symptoms, increased use of crisis services, risk of homelessness and incarceration, and increase of costs to the mental health system. In terms of the benchmarks themselves, one example of problems is urgent service requests opened to outpatient providers and the length of time to the first outpatient appointment. The benchmark for that is seven days, and for adults, the delay, the length of time is approximately 30 days with only 5 percent meeting that benchmark. There is a benchmark that is in compliance, though, and that's for acute hospital discharge to first psychiatric service, and the county is in compliance for nearly three quarters of children and adults served. So that is a positive result.
Dr. Neil, can I interrupt for a sec?
Yes.
On, on the issue of compliance, while I, I understand what that means, what I don't understand necessarily is how do we, and maybe you have this information, maybe you don't, but how do we compare to other counties?
I don't have that data for other counties.
Okay. I think it'd be interesting for the, for the board, it'd be good for the board to understand, not just, you know, yeah, not just the binary, out of compliance, in compliance, but kind of where are we relative to the other counties in the state?
Yes. We could, we could probably look for that data. There are, there is an organization that does analysis for all the other counties in the state, and that data might be available by looking in those reports for other counties.
Thank you.
In terms of timeliness, the Division is making attempts to improve timeliness. They have several projects. One is called MedBridge, and that project uses the Adult Psychiatric Support Services Clinic as a medication bridge program for individuals who are unlinked to the mental health plan. They receive services at the urgent care clinic, and the goal is to increase timeliness and engagement by providing psychiatric services until the beneficiary can have their first face-to-face meeting with an outpatient psychiatrist. The other project is the Avatar Schedular, and in this, the Avatar program schedules the initial appointment using uniform electronic scheduling among adult providers, and the intent is to decrease the no-show rate by eliminating initial delays in obtaining the first appointment with the provider. You have also increased funding in November of 2017 by $44 million, which was, will expand treatment slots. These slots have been increased by 900 slots to date, which increases the available appointments. The Mental Health Board is going to continue to monitor timeliness by looking at the calendar year 18 and calendar year 19 data, because that's going to be how long it's going to take for these changes to appear in the data. The final issue that we are reporting on today is the capacity to provide services. Since fiscal year 2008, 09, the Division's budget has not kept pace with inflation in four out of 11 years. Sacramento County's average cost per beneficiary lags various indicators. When you compare Sacramento's expenditures with other large counties, we are approximately $1,900 less per beneficiary, and compared with the statewide rate, we're approximately $1,400 less. The EQRO, or External Quality Review Organization, which was the organization I referred to previously, is an independent evaluator. This exists in every state, and it was created by the federal Medicaid statute to independently review county mental health plans. They annually evaluate quality, timeliness, and access to specialty mental health services. This organization reports that the Division is in a crisis of inadequate resources to meet beneficiary, beneficiary needs, and that the gap between capacity and demand has reached a point that is directly affecting quality of care. And the lack of timeliness that I reported on is a manifestation of this capacity problem due to a lack of staff to provide available appointment times. The mental health contractors in the county reported to the EQRO that, oh, well, I did want to report first that we are aware that contractors have received COLAs, and this happened in fiscal year 1617 and fiscal year 1819. Nonetheless, the contractors are reporting continued problems to the EQRO in their report in fiscal year 1819. They report that they're carrying caseloads at twice the number of their original contracts. They're dealing with high turnover rates of their most qualified staff due to non-competitive salaries, and that they're not being able to keep up with the cost of doing business.
Can you give us an, an idea of the order of magnitude in terms of, what does that mean to have twice the, the caseload?
Well, I don't have specific details, but in the contracts, they negotiate a specific number of staff, a specific number of clients that they're supposed to serve, and they're actually being referred clients at a higher rate than are in the contracts.
No, I, I understand the concept, but is it, is it, are they, were they initially contracted to have a caseload of 15, and now they're doing, they have 30?
Oh, no, it's more like their, their contract rate is 300.
Okay.
And so they're getting clients at, you know, at, at double that rate. And I could, I could get you that specific information and report back to you.
I'd like to have that.
Yeah. I think you're, you're seeing some interest expressed by board members. Supervisor Tolly, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, and some of this relates to, obviously, their contracts, and there were some adjustments made, but is it not the reimbursement rates, then? And I think there are, I've seen comparisons, us versus other like and similar jurisdictions in the state. Is that what we're talking about, your, and in addition to, obviously, additional capacity, caseload capacity, then is it the reimbursement rate? Because I, that's, is that a piece of it?
Well, I believe, I believe the reimbursement, the reimbursement rate remains constant, but they have the same number of staff trying to serve, you know, double the amount of clients.
Right. No, I followed you on that. But, but is, is it also that the reimbursement rate in comparison to other counties or communities, I guess it'd be counties, is, is, is less than even without the additional caseload? Is, is it, is there a, a chart in contained here? Have you been given the information to the Mental Health Board that shows that? Because, again, I've been with some providers over time now, over the last couple of years, in fact, some very, very recently, that showed me the reimbursement rates, and, you know, we certainly weren't the lowest, but we weren't, you know, we weren't leading the pack either.
Right. We haven't been provided that data, but I can, I can get that, that information about comparative reimbursement rates between counties for you, too.
Sure. And I wasn't putting it off on you or the board. I mean, again, obviously, Mr. Quist or Mr. Bealenson probably have ready access to that information, obviously, since we're the, we're contracting with the, the contractors. So, again, I just was curious to whether or not that was taken into consideration. I get it on the caseload that whatever the reimbursement rate, even if you had, you were leading the pack, but if you double your caseload, the ability then to, you know, compensate appropriately for time and staff and, and the follow-on becomes increasingly difficult with that same amount of staff. So, okay. Thank you.
Right. So, to conclude, we have two recommendations regarding capacity, and one is that the Board of, the Board of Supervisors should continue to increase the Division's budget, because we know that you have made increases recently, but we believe that there should be a continued increase in the budget to increase the capacity of services until the average cost per beneficiary approaches that of other large counties or at least the statewide rate. And the contract providers should be given sufficient cost of living increases to account for the cost of doing business and the need to adequately compensate their staff to retain their qualified staff. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Great. Thank you. I think we probably do have some questions. First, let me start by thanking you for your service on the Mental Health Board and for a very thorough report back. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank him in absentia, but I want to, I want to thank our colleague, Patrick Kennedy, who's this board's representative to the Mental Health Board. I know many of the, the initiatives and challenges that have been expressed in this report are important issues for him, and he's been quite a champion on the Mental Health Board for, for us and for the county. So I just want to make that clear. And with that, I see that Supervisor Peters is in the queue for a question.
Hey, thank you. This question really is for the county executive or maybe Peter, I'm Bruce, I'm not sure. The way the report is set up is there is a recommendation of what to do in various subjects. Is it part of this plan that you will come back to us to say you disagree or agree with this recommendation, or you have an ability to fund or not, to make comment on the recommendations?
Sure. I think we should make comments on the recommendations. Dr. Bealenson and Dr. Quist are both here today, and we can certainly come back to the board to provide follow-up performance data. I think it's worth noting, though, from my perspective, Supervisor, that, and I appreciate the comments very, very much, and the work that we get with the Mental Health Board, as well as our other stakeholders. The area of mental health services is a key priority for us, as evidenced, I would have to say, by the fact that, as the PowerPoint mentioned, last year, 2017, we made an aggressive effort with MHSA dollars of about $44 million. And what the PowerPoint did not mention was that just a couple of months ago, I forget when it was, we came to you with an additional significant effort of about $72 million in MHSA dollars. So we're putting those resources out into the community in a very, frankly, aggressive way, recognizing not just what the PowerPoint pointed out in terms of performance, but the overall need for mental health services in our community.
So the additional money that went out this year probably wouldn't be reflected in this, the timeliness?
Very good question. I don't think it's reflected, I forget the acronym, I'm sorry, that did the assessment of timeliness. I'm not sure about that. I think Dr. Quist can speak to that, or Dr. Bealenson. It's a very good question. Because that just, that just occurred, and we're still in the process of putting that money out on the street.
Right. I know it takes a while to put the money out.
Very likely not.
Okay.
Can I offer a follow-up question, too, or suggestion? The, the last point that the doctor made in her presentation was a recommendation to, to seek parity with other counties in terms of our budgeting, our investment. Well, while I certainly appreciate that, and you heard from me, in fact, earlier when I interrupted, that we want to see some comparison in other regards to other counties of similar size when it comes to administration provision of mental health services. But do we have, I mean, do we, do we possess, for lack of a better phrase, a strategic plan of sorts that looks at other metrics besides just where we compare to other counties in terms of the, you know, how are we doing in terms of the outcomes that we want, so that it's not just we're budgeting because Alameda County budgets X amount, but we're budgeting because we have a shortfall based on where we think we need to be in certain, given certain parameters in, in terms of our, the totality of mental health services for Sacramento County residents?
Yes, we do. And I, I'll turn that over to Dr. Quist.
Can, I'm sorry, could you elevate the, you're a tall guy.
Yeah.
We do, and I'll have Dr. Quist touch on that.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out that $72 million is additional dollars that was left over in previous years in our MHSA that most other counties have huge sums so doing, that you guys went ahead and, and applied to existing problems. So we have our, our ongoing $56 million or so that were coming in from MHSA. You put forward $72 million more dollars in excess of that in, in August and November. We've already started hiring, from the November approval of the SRA, was the SRA, is that what it's called? We've already started hiring those 29 people. So in, in answer to, I think Supervisor Peters' question, the numbers would not appear yet in 1819 or 1920, obviously.
Thank you.
And if I could, just a couple other things. We're aggressively moving on an IMD waiver. The IMD waiver, which is a statewide waiver, colludes Medicaid dollars, excuse me, Medicaid dollars from being spent on institutions of greater than 16 beds, which is why we have this weird 16-bed requirement. So we are working on, with the HCS on that. And thirdly, I should point out that, as I think I've talked with many of you before, about the fact that prescription meds are not being, prescription psychiatric meds are not being provided at discharge from the main jail, which leads to a problem of the revolving door, people being released without their meds, not having services, decompensating, ending up 51/50 in the emergency department, and then back either in the emergency room or homeless, or back to jail. We finally, finally have got approval to do the prescription medications for sentenced members, sentenced incarceries, as they leave the jail, to give them medications of between 14 and 28 days to cover them until they get into treatment.
That are fulfilled, I assume, through our own pharmacy?
Through, through the County Health Department. Yes. So I just wanted to mention those three things.
Great. Thank you. I did have, I did have a question. That was one of the notes I had written down during the course of the presentation, was what are some of the nuances of the quote-unquote warm handoff of inmates when they are released, and if they are being administered psychiatric care, including prescription of medications? How do we, how do we make sure that that goes uninterrupted so that there's no lapse and, and the prospect of decompensation?
That we actually have that process in place. It should start, I want to say, later this month, but I would say probably January.
Okay. I know that Supervisor Tolly's been patient.
Yeah. Thank you. And welcome back, Dr. Bealenson. I just, a couple of things that were in the report, and one that I consistently ask about, because I think it's indicative of some of the stressors when it comes to the allocation of resources, and that is, is that the number of inpatient bed days, and I think we're, last account, if I remember, we're 28 or 29 million, which is 28,000 or 29,000 inpatient days. I know you've responded to that at the, at the podium in the past. And, you know, the initiatives that we have that are community-based, that are, you know, below below, you know, acute or crisis, that, you know, hopefully would stem some of that. Obviously, you know, we're having some effect, but it's certainly not necessarily showing in the number of bed days. I guess if we didn't have those things, we'd probably see even more significant numbers of the inpatients. So, I guess I was curious around that particular part of it, because that's such a, such a draw, $1,000 a day with the hospital systems. And again, a lot of that's not even mental health-related care. It's keeping somebody, I guess, safe and in place momentarily, but...
So, two things on that. One, the IMD waiver that Supervisor Frost, Dr. Frost, mentioned to me, Supervisor Frost mentioned to me a couple of days ago, would make a huge difference because it would allow Medicaid to cover those, some of the costs, 50% of the costs.
Okay.
Secondly, with our $72 million that you gave us to use on the excess, on the extra money, at least $14 million or so is going to be going to housing, including board and cares on the downside, to be able to unload people from this, I've been calling it a constipated system, where the system is stuck. Conject, thank you. Conject.
We all got the analogy, I guess.
Medical term.
The problem is that so many of the people end up in the psychiatric hospitals and then can't get stepped down because there isn't anything to step them down to. We're actually looking at doing an RFP process for the $14 million to do a lot of board and cares, and by paying them at an appropriate rate, as, because what, because many of them have gone out of business recently because they're paid at a very low rate. So, we're looking at those two things as potential significant improvements in the system.
So, but these would be relicensed or licensed board and cares. To your point, and again, I think we've had that conversation, certainly even at this dais, of that, you know, we've seen a significant number of them go out, and yet, de facto, we're seeing others that, you know, do a, you know, room and board and, you know, use some level of, I guess, qualified independency to allow them to maybe skirt around some of the regulations. But I think having some ability to, you know, move people from the emergency setting to something that would allow for stabilization, but provide, you know, a solid level of mental health support, but also other support for some of the other needs. I guess I wanted to ask too, and it was, really caught my attention in, in Dr. O'Neill's presentation, is this, the timeliness. Because I think, again, that in and of itself, and there are different measures for that, but, you know, access to services, obviously in the community, or if there are walk-in services, obviously, if it's an immediate crisis, you know, transport to emergency rooms and so forth. But, you know, the follow-on for both outpatient services, but, you know, as needs are identified, obviously self-identified, or families with children and so forth. I guess your assessment of how we're doing, I mean, you know, Anne pointed out, you know, seven, 14, 20, 30-day triggers. But if you need somebody's attention right away, either a follow-on appointment, to your point about meds for those exiting jail, if you don't see somebody, you've just left incarceration circumstances, even with your meds. I mean, that's going to be a help, but if you don't get, you didn't see somebody within 14 or 28 days, you're going to run out of medication, and God knows what happens. Well, we do know what happens.
So, since Ryan's been here, actually, there's been a significant increase and decrease in weights, particularly on the substance use side, if I'm not mistaken, which, when I, when I started, was about three months for the adults, for adult men, and about six weeks for adult women, and that's gone down dramatically since then. I know it's not specifically mental health, it's behavioral health.
Right.
But we do track these things. And again, the $72 million of new dollars should go to, or are obviously expanding a variety of existing programs, as well as doing some new prevention or intervention and innovation programs. And the expansion should help both with some of the COLA and some of the timeliness. But again, that has, that does not appear yet in Dr. O'Neill's presentation, although the 44 million did.
If I, if I may add to that Supervisor, and this goes to Supervisor Peters' question, as well as Supervisor Serna, I would suggest that we come back to the board. Once this money's been put in the community, we see the effect of it, let's see how this, and we got to believe it's going to impact the timeliness and the other issues that were brought up. We're going to be tracking that to see if that is indeed the case, but we can report back to you in that actual experience.
Well, yeah, I think it's a good idea, and obviously, I appreciate the engagement of the Mental Health Board and certainly the leadership that's shown here. But again, I think, knowing that dollars won't, you know, are doing what, what we intended, and hopefully the outcomes reflect that, but I think, you know, if not, then I think, then it says we've got other things we need to address. And again, you've got to qualify professionals, but I just think that, you know, some of this is time-sensitive, no doubt about it, so...
Mr. Gill and Mr. Wagstaff had suggested that we do, and that we are doing, and we've started as, for one of the first departments to do so, is to get performance metrics that we report on regularly, and have a dashboard for such. And we actually can give you the, the numbers on the number of days, et cetera, now. So, we will, what I would promise to you, pledge to you guys, is to give you whatever data we can give you now, based on what Dr. O'Neill was talking about, and then, again, give you a report maybe in a year or so on how the, how we're doing with the MHSAs money.
Well, and we've had those child protective services measures in place for many years now, that, you know, tell us about follow-on, you know, certainly the criticality of timeliness, both for, you know, investigations, interventions and such. And I think that that's been, been very helpful, certainly in guiding, I think, you know, board decisions here with resources, but also, I think, with the department and implementing any number of measures, and give credit to the professional staff for their, their work, both in the field, but also in, you know, making sure that those measures are, you know, guideposts that, you know, help. And if we're, if we're falling short, then, you know, try to know the Y4s and, you know, recognize we have limitations on our resources, but, you know, figure out how we can best address those areas where we're, you know, and also, you know, as we're doing better, you know, and doing well. Yeah. Now, you were going to speak, I'm sorry, I had you.
No, I was just going to point out that this is an issue that the urban counties are looking at, and not only just what's the dollar going out, what kind of services. And at the executive and CIO level, we've committed to share all the data with each other, because as the board knows, different urban counties have had in the past a big sum of money that's not gotten out. We put money out, San Diego's looking at it, Orange is looking at it, and we're going to engage our mental health professionals with the execs to put more information out and see what we can garner from that information and guide some of our decisions. So, that works on its underweight too.
Supervisor Frost.
Yes. Dr. Bealenson, I wanted to, first, I wanted to address page 10 of her PowerPoint and just comment, because since I've, since I've been here over the last couple of years, I've been visited multiple times by some of these people who are contracting with the county, and that conversation around the wage inequities has come up, and to the point where I've, I understand there are some contractors who have had complete, almost complete walkouts, where everybody resigned because they got better jobs somewhere else, because they're just not being paid as much as what's comparable out there. So, I wonder if there's a way that we can review those contracts and see if there's something we need to do to improve that situation. And I want to, you, you mentioned no place to step down to, and I understand, you know, when we're in this acute setting where someone goes into the emergency room and they're maybe on a 51-50 hold for three days, and then it's extended 30 days into an acute setting, and then from what I'm, pardon me?
No, go ahead.
From what I'm understanding, from the acute setting, there is a subacute, long-term setting that they should be able to step down to and then to a board and care. There's, there's a, there's a gap in services. I don't know if this is true. I, I'm asking, I guess, because from what I understand, from the acute setting to the board and care can sometimes, with serious mental illness, be a challenge, because those kinds of people are not necessarily ready for a situation where they, where they might hurt them. They may not have the as intense oversight, or whatever you want to call it, titration of their medications, attention to, to their, what they're doing, time out of, out of a room. You know, in the acute setting, they're, they're in a room, they don't get out as much, so there's, it's not as, they don't have the normalcy that they might get at home. The point I'm trying to make, and I know we're having that conversation around, you know, a long-term care, criminal, a long-term care facility where people who are seriously mentally ill, who can be placed in, in something like that instead of in our jail. But I would like to see if we could explore, number one, where are we with subacute, long-term, as far as, you know, my understanding is there should be 40 beds per 1,000 people, and we have something like 53 beds for 1.5 million, or I don't really know. I, I know that we don't have what we need to have as far as the subacute. So, I'd like to explore what we can do with the Mental Health Services Act funds to improve the continuity of care that, that takes a person from the acute setting to the subacute, to the board and care. This would make it easier on families who are trying to normalize their loved one into a situation where they're, where they're gonna, they're gonna be okay, and we're not going to have the exacerbated problems.
I'll let Ryan answer the second part of the question. The first part of the question, in terms of COLAs, obviously, we, we don't pay as well as Kaiser, for example. So, we do, in our system, lose some people to Kaiser, some social workers and LMFTs. But what we're trying to do is actually work in a coordinated way with the FQHCs, Ryan knows this to some extent, but not fully yet, FQHCs, to revise some of the psychiatric care and get reimbursed at FQHC rates at some of these contractors, and I'll instead use some of that money for more, hiring more and at higher levels, the social workers and the LMFTs. That's something new to the community that we're just starting to look at as of this month. So, that's something that will be hopefully coming forward, and that would help to provide higher salaries for the social workers, et cetera, because the psychiatric, psychiatric care would be provided by onsite, at the same site, by the FQHCs. There's a lot of interest in the FQHCs. And I should mention one other thing. We'll be starting probably in July, school-based mental health services at between 10 and 15 of the schools in the county, which will be, again, cost-neutral, because of FQHC, we'll be satelliting our FQHC, our federally qualified health center, our Sacramento County Health Center, to use as a satellite site at each of the different schools, to provide mental health services onsite at each of those 10 to 15 schools, with a plan to go up to maybe 140 or 150 in the next few years. So, that's, again, a way of looking at existing funding in a different way that's been looked at before. Let me turn over to Ryan on the subacute.
So, when you say school-based mental health, what is that? Is that like promoting mental health?
No, 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 no.
Or is that treating mental illness?
It's having full clinicians treating mental illness at the site, at the school.
Okay.
Which is new.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Supervisors Ryan Quist, Behavioral Health Services. Relating to the subacute question, this is something that we've been paying a very close attention to. First of all, as a part of the 29 positions that were approved recently, we have, I think it was three positions that are going to be working specifically on doing those placements, both assessing the placement for its appropriateness, as well as working with the individual that needs to be placed. In addition, we have a board letter coming forward, I believe in January, that's going to be for adult residential treatment. This is a subacute placement, and we're hoping to expand that. And then, we also have, as a part of that same board letter, we'll also have augmented, augmented board and cares. So, the board and cares are having problems staying in business at their current rates. So, we're going to augment that funding by giving them a patch in order to be able to have additional funds to help keep them in business. And I think that together, it's about $5 million that's being invested in this area, so I think that's one significant thing that we're doing in the very short term. We're talking January. In addition to that, we have another skilled nursing facility with a, it's called a psychiatric special needs program, a SNF, NTP, something like that, which is coming to Sacramento County as well. We're talking about 60 beds, which would be really amazing. They, I don't know the exact time on that line, on that. I'm hoping before mid-2020.
On the residential subacute, are those locked?
No.
So, someone could go from acute to subacute and walk?
It's a voluntary, they, they are assessed as a part of it, that's, they're asked, hey, do you want to come to this particular context? And they're engaged in a way that helps them understand the benefit of doing that. And so, they're actually going there by choice.
So, is that a board and care or a subacute?
It's a subacute.
What is, what defines it as subacute?
Subacute technically is anything, probably anything between a full acute to the board and cares. So, it's sort of a supported living environment.
So, there might be a difference in how people feel about acute versus subacute? Because some of the families that I'm talking to are basically saying they feel the acute is pretty intense. They're locked in a room, they don't get outside, they can't smoke, and they, if they were in a subacute where they can't walk, where they would be watched until they get them normalized on their Medicaid titrated, or whatever you call it. So, am I, is there a...
Yeah. So, the residential treatment facilities, what they'll do is they'll have very structured activities with staff onsite, that are treatment staff onsite, helping support the individuals with whatever their needs are at the moment. It's a very structured environment, helping them, you know, have different activities with their peers. That's sort of, it's very different from that acute setting.
Okay. And then lastly, I, I wanted to see if, I know there's, there are, for serious mental illness, there are those who are, they, they, there are crisis situations where if we could get them before the crisis, we would save a lot of money in first responders and emergency care and hospitalizations. And I wonder if we can explore the assisted outpatient therapy and the concept of an alternative for those who are seriously mentally ill, who are maybe drug abusers, you know, using drugs to medicate themselves, to require, and I'm talking about the Laura's Law, I'd like to see if there's a way that we can look into a program that would capture that, I guess, divert that situation before it exacerbates.
Yes, we're definitely willing to talk about that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Tolle.
Yeah, just a quick follow-on, Ryan, and a question about, since you're going to be bringing very quickly to the board this supplemental support for board and cares, is there going to be some quality certification? Because not every board and care is alike. And I think that, you know, we have, over time, certainly with programs with more than six, asked for, you know, you know, good neighbor policies, but beyond that, for those people that would go, you know, go into those situations, and there are many good providers. So, this is not meant to be, anyway, in some way, that there, that's not a good setting for a lot of folks. But I think it's important, rather than just giving some bridge dollars, that behind it, if we're going to put our county mental health dollars for county residents and folks in need, that would, you know, step down. And I know about state licensing, I get all that, but, you know, the frequency of business and so forth is, you know, I think it leaves a lot to be desired. And I guess I would ask that, if we're going to expend our precious dollars in that way, that, you know, maybe we have a way to further certify quality of care and attention to it, because, you know, board and care is, you know, is a semi-independent or independent to the degree that you're paying, you know, for room and board, or somebody is subsidizing that, you've got a place to stay with certain facilities that are pretty basic in a lot of respects, but I think no less essential. Then I guess I would ask that maybe as a part of that, that there be some expertise regarding, you know, medication, you know, dispensation, if in fact, you know, again, you know, I, again, I just, we don't really have a formal ombudsman program with the county any longer. We use Area 4, A10, A11. We use Area 4, A10A1, and that's helpful. But if we're going to enter this arena, which I don't discount in any way, I guess I'm gonna ask, you know, if you're gonna bring it to us in January, that there be some thought given to, not to chew up money administratively, but that there be some additional oversight, and we just don't say, "Your state license is good enough." I think we need to, as a part of that bridge funding, make sure that the attention to the folks who are placed there, but certainly those that are coming via the mental health system here in this county, that they, you know, be, you know, assured, not just of the essentials, but obviously, hopefully, making sure that they can get to their appointments, if they're gonna have follow-on medical appointments. And that the quality of the living arrangement is one that, you know, would be something that we, for ourselves, or for our close family members or friends, that we would, you know, we would be pleased with that. And so, again, they can be fairly austere. On the other hand, I think if we're gonna help, you know, bridge some of that gap, that, you know, that needs to be a part of us. I don't know, Ryan, have you maybe had experience in this regard in the past? But I, my experience has said that, you know, not all boarding cares are the same.
Sure. So Supervisor Natoli, I know that you know that, the difference, but just for the public really quick, the room and boards are unlicensed.
Right.
Spots. And then boarding cares are licensed. So we are not trying to propose the room and boards as a part of this. We're proposing the boarding cares, which are licensed. But you're right, there are differences across different boarding cares. And that's what I mentioned, that we were going to be including some positions. I don't want to get the number wrong, but there's a number of positions that were included in those 29 that you all approved for us, that are going to be specifically focused on that. They go out, they assess the location, make sure it's the right fit for the, they assess the individual, they assess the location, make sure they're the right fit for one another, that they're gonna have the right level of support. In addition, these individuals that are staying in the boarding cares are still gonna be linked to services. So they're gonna be receiving ongoing services from the division.
Okay. Now, I appreciate the distinctions you made, Ryan, and yes, I think that's a very important distinction, but state licensure isn't, you know, an assurance that there's always gonna be a certain level of quality of care and attention, both in the facility, in the home itself, but also in the tenerness of, obviously, the people that are employed to, you know, to operate and oversee the goings-on in the boarding cares. Provides a higher level of assurance, and I guess I certainly encourage that, but I think that as a part of our helping to bridge and hopefully provide sufficient support so they can, you know, have a business model that, you know, that allows them to employ people that are capable and competent, but also to maintain the facilities. And I think that the eyes upon that are important in having proper placement. So, again, I assume you can develop that more when you bring that forward to us in January, but I just, you know, being that you put it out there, I wanted to just give you a heads on, that, or heads out, that it's an important element as far as I'm concerned. And I trust that you see it that way, too, when you just said so. Thanks.
Great, thanks. I just would add, given the comment by Supervisor Frost about an interest in Laura's Law, that I would strongly encourage that any time this board is going to, in open session, get a report back on any prospective merits on Laura's Law, or the nuances of Laura's Law, that we not forget that we actually do have a conservatorship program here in Sacramento County, Cares Plus. And if we are going to, you know, at any time in the future, entertain looking at Laura's Law becoming something that might be considered and implemented in Sacramento County, we also simultaneously understand that we do have something in place today that I would argue is equally effective. It's not as widely known as Laura's Law, and perhaps there's ways that we can enhance the outcomes that we all want by way of that being a component part of our mental health continuum of care. But I just don't want to have a, have a conversation that is just focused on one, you know, possible way to enhance conservatorship programs in particular when it comes to, again, that cog in our, in our mental health machinery here. Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, one other question. It was on page 54 of the appendix, it was the performance report, and it relates to the mental health triage navigator program. And some of the merits of the program, I think, are multiple, but what was kind of stark here, maybe Ryan or Dr. Bealens, or maybe you could, Dr. O'Neil could speak to it, but in the main jail, for the numbers referred, and then the numbers screened, the percentages starkly lower than any of the others in releases from hospitals, and including Loews and Fishes, and UCD, and, I guess I just was curious as to why, if the referrals are made, you have them in an incarcerated situation prior to their release, maybe the screening occurs after, and people just disappear? I don't know. So what's the explanation behind only 17% being screened?
I think it's a challenging, a challenging context, because it's a locked facility, and we're talking about our behavioral health folks needing to get into them, being able to get to the individuals to screen them, that's one part of it. But I think that what we're currently doing is we're working very closely with correctional health services, as this, using this as our main mechanism of trying to link them with services on the way out. So this is something Sandy Damiano and I have been talking about and working on over the last few months. So I'm hoping those, we'll see those numbers change going forward.
Yeah, because the number of referrals is double any other, you know, facility, recognizing the number of folks, but I think Dr. Bealens's, you know, comments about sending meds with them, but, you know, having, you know, screening not only for medications, but for, you know, appropriate service, hopefully timely service once they get out, because otherwise, to what you've all described, is that you get that, you know, circle. It just keeps going on and on and on. So, again, challenged or not, and recognizing that, you know, including litigation that's coming against this county, that if this be an area, if we've got 1,000 referrals in 2017, 18, or almost 1,050, and we only saw 17% of those folks, you know, again, I wouldn't expect you're gonna see them all, but...
So we are getting a proposal that is going into whole person cares, Part III, which is unlike the other whole person cares, which you all dealt with before, has no local match, no requirements, very open list of projects that we can use. We are going to concentrate predominantly on the correctional folks and connecting them to care for this exact reason. And that's gonna be about $2.6 million. It's good for four years, but we're gonna probably use it in a year and a half. So you should see some improvement in that as well. But it's a very difficult population to get connected, and many people just want to get out and leave.
And go.
It will never be 100%.
But you can, I guess, the screening part of that, to your point, you know, that, you know, while they're still in, you know, they're in custody, and you can't force people to, you know, to be, I guess, screened, but either that, or if the referrals are appropriate, and maybe, you know, so, you know, I think that needs to be, on the other hand, are you, you know, appropriately referring?
Here's the problem.
Yeah.
Only about 35 or 40%, I may be wrong, of any given day coming out are sentenced population, who have been there for a period of time.
Right.
The vast majority of people have been there for a day, two days, three days, and so getting them referral, it's just, it can't even be set up with the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
So you're really talking, if you, and we're looking at this, the prescription meds for our sentenced population, where there's been time, where the doctor can write the prescription that they're already on, and get it to our pharmacy, and get it out the door. So to really look at this in a legitimate fashion, I think you have to look at the sentenced population, what percent of the sentenced population gets referred and gets placed as opposed to the overall population.
That's an important distinction, Dr. Bealens, and I would concur with you, then. So maybe that, on the sheriff's side, about who is doing the referral, either in, you know, if it's our jail psychiatric services, which are under contract, or whatever, that make sure that there's a clear distinction, because otherwise, I think this, if you just look at the number on this chart, it just, you know, it kind of screams out at you, but if in fact there's an explanation, as you just said, which I can see that, then, I think that needs to be a part of the, whatever chart we put together in the future to chart that, so, okay, thanks.
Supervisor Frost?
Oh, yeah, I just thought, after Supervisor Serna's comments, maybe I should, for clarity's sake, specifically, say that specifically I'm interested in the assisted outpatient therapy. I'm understanding, based on some of the articles that I've read, that they've, there are states that, and counties that have started this program with the assisted outpatient therapy, AOT, and it's reduced their ER mental health population by something like 39%. They're having some great success with it. So I think that would be a good place to start, just to see what everyone else is doing, and is there some opportunity there for us?
We'd be very happy to report back to you in either a good timed manner, or file and receive whatever you wish to see on both, on both of those issues.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We don't have anyone sign up to speak on this matter. This is a receivable file, is it not, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, we need to, actually, we went a little too fast with regard to an earlier item. For item 56, we actually need a motion to adopt the resolutions. This was also a receivable file. So the chair will make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Natoli. Please vote.
Supervisor Peters?
I was trying to handle the...
It was, this was the...
I thought it was a receivable file, but...
It was, but I was handed a note by the clerk that said that we actually had to act on the resolutions.
There was a, for item two of the report, you need to adopt the resolutions to make the findings for Government Code 66001.
For item two?
There were two recommendations.
In item 56?
Correct.
Yeah. It's not the, it's not the item where you were expressing some concern about the need to recuse, so I think we're all, we're okay there.
I want to, as I can't look back.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Okay. All right. If I'm not mistaken, that concludes our morning session.
Yes.
Okay. Are we all prepared to do appointments at this point, or nominations? Because I'd like to just maybe have a clean afternoon, none of us, there's no objections.
That would be item 61.
Do you clear the screen?
Okay, for item 61, you are continuing to January 14th, 2020, the Sacramento County Youth Commission, Sacramento, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. You are continuing to February 11th, the Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Casumna's Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Councils, Elk Grove, Casumna Cemetery District, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. On three matters today, you have the Disability Advisory Commission. Mr. Serna?
Okay, chiefs are recommending nomination of Hendridge Holloway, and reappointing William Fillet, Randy Hicks, Eugene Lozano Jr., Carol Moss, Reggie Nelson, and Patricia Gainer. Please continue the remainder to February 11th.
First five, commission?
Chiefs are recommending the nomination of Stephen Wertz, Eric Fernandez, E. Garcia, and Christina Elliott as the community member seats, and then reappointing Dr. Lee Turner as a community member alternate, and then waive the process.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Chiefs are also recommending nominating Elizabeth Hassett and Scott Moke to the vacated community member alternate seats for Steve Wertz and Christina Elliott, and to also waive the process.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Okay. For the Galt Arno Cemetery District, Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I would nominate Guy Rutter, incumbent.
Okay.
He still has one seat. Hold that over till late January, please.
Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District, Ms. Peters?
Please continue to January 14.
Okay. We have Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Mr. Natoli?
Continue to January 14, please.
Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Mr. Natoli?
Likewise, January 14, please.
Okay, got it. And that concludes your nominations.
Great, thank you. We don't have anyone sign up to speak on items not on the agenda, correct?
Correct. I haven't received any speaker slips.
All right. We are in recess till 2:00, and there is no closed session.
I got a...
There is a closed session.
There is not a closed session. It's going to be continued.
I'd like to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. Madam Clerk, we, please call the roll and reestablish your quorum.
Sure. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Great, thank you.
So we are gonna go to item 13, which was held from this morning. This is to authorize the execution of lease agreement number 1864 for the Sacramento Public Library Authority at 8820 Greenback Lane. The environmental document is exempt.
Supervisor Frost?
I'm gonna ask that we continue this to January, please.
Okay. Chair will second. Do you have to have a motion, or not?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you.
Okay, so for item 59, this is the Dry Creek Road and Loop Road General Plan Amendment. It's a general plan amendment to downgrade Dry Creek Road and Loop Road from four-lane arterials to a local road consistent with the Elverta specific plan. The environmental determination is an addendum to prior final environmental impact report.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Leanne Loffit, Planning Director, here to give the staff presentation. And before I start, I just did want to note that this item and the next item are part of a general plan round, so you will be adopting a single resolution at the end of both. So we'll go through this item, you can take action on the SEQA document, and then we'll have you hold final approval. All right. So the location here is Dry Creek Road from U Street to Loop, and Loop Road from 16th Street to Elverta. This is in the Elverta community, and these roads are also within the already adopted Elverta specific plan. The request is a general plan amendment to downgrade Dry Creek Road and Loop Road from a four-lane arterial to a loop road. And essentially, what happened here is when the specific plan went through, in around, I think it was 2008 or so, a decision was made that a couple of these roads would be built ultimately as two-lane local roads, rather than four-lane larger arterials. However, in the final specific plan adoption, the general plan wasn't reconciled appropriately and didn't match the adopted specific plan. So that was noted more recently, as we're processing some of the maps, and this cleans up that discrepancy. So this is a diagram of the existing general plan designations, with a couple of those roads shown in blue in the center of the map. And after today's adoption, you can see that little small segment of Dry Creek Road and the small segment of Loop Road disappear from the general plan map. The blue goes away, allowing them to be two-lane, two-lane local roads instead of four-lane arterials. The Community Planning Advisory Council recommends approval on a five-to-zero vote. Staff recommends approval relying on the Environmental Coordinator's addendum dated August 5th, 2019, determining the prior EIR to be adequate and appropriate. And that concludes the staff presentation.
Okay, so that's the entirety of the staff presentation for item 59?
Yes.
Okay. And so we need to act just once, though, on 5960?
Yes, you can take the first recommended staff action, which is recognizing the addendum right now, and then defer the second action in the board report.
Okay, any questions of staff? I don't have anyone sign up to speak on item 59.
Yeah, I have questions answered.
Okay, entertain a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay.
Item 60, adopt the Phase II Environmental Justice General Plan Amendment package, and the environmental determination is exempt.
Well, while the PowerPoint's getting loaded, my name's Todd Smith, Principal Planner in the Long Range and Master Plans Section. I want to thank the board for taking the time on this item today. I have the honor of presenting the item, but I want to acknowledge those who have participated in this process over the last 18 months or so. That includes members of the Environmental Justice Advisory Committee, which contained representatives from the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District... representatives from the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, WAC Sacramento, Sacramento Food Policy Council, the Community Resource Project, and staff from the Department of Public Health. All of those folks played a role in shaping this into what it is presented here today. So, we'll get right into it. SB 1000 was a law passed in 2016, and essentially, it requires cities and counties that have disadvantaged communities to identify objectives and policies in their general plans that address or reduce unique or compounded health risks, increase civic or civil engagement in public decision-making, and to prioritize programs and public improvements. The main feature, or a main feature of this Phase Two EJ element is a comparison of disadvantaged areas with non-disadvantaged areas. We also address geographic and procedural inequities as part of this element. And again, I want to reiterate the unique, a focus on the unique or compounded health risks in the disadvantaged areas. So as part of this process, I want to do a quick refresher. We did identify four environmental justice communities within the county. They are North Highlands, Foothill Farms, North Vineyard, South Sacramento, and West Arden Arcade, shown there in the graphic on the right of the slide. And we covered the topical areas of prioritizing improvements and programs for EJ communities, reducing pollution exposure and improving air quality, promoting public facilities, healthy food access, safe and sanitary homes, physical activity, crime prevention, and promoting civil engagement. We've done this in two phases. The first phase consisted of baseline research and identifying existing policies in the general plan that speak to some of these topics that I mentioned in the previous slide. We did very limited policy development, other than identifying those existing policies in Phase One, and that was adopted by the board in May of 2018. Immediately after that, we kicked off Phase Two, where we had extensive public engagement. We did additional baseline research with the help of the Environmental Justice Advisory Committee. We worked on additional policy development and some modification to those proposed policies that I'll get into in a second. And our goal, which is why we're here today, is approval by the board. As part of this effort, we did extensive public outreach. Attachment five in your board package contains a more detailed listing, but I'll summarize it here. Staff participated in seven community events where we essentially put a pop-up shade structure and had staff engaging with community members to identify what those things were that community members identified as needed or desired in their communities. We also did four community workshops in the EJ communities. We also participated in numerous meetings with community and special interest groups. I think I tallied about 17 of those meetings. We put out a web survey for a period of two months, where we received 719 responses, and we also extended that survey to some community-based organizations to conduct their own independent surveys to help gather additional data from the communities. We've got a GovDelivery subscription topic. This is one of the mechanisms that the county uses to disseminate information, to identify when community events are going on. At the time we published this, we had 1617 subscribers. We are now up to 1728. So it's a big jump. And finally, we, when we started going through the CPAC hearing process back in August, we published the fruits of all this effort, which was a public review draft, Phase Two EJ element. That was publicly available for review and comment from August 2nd through November 15th of this year. One of the things that we feel is most important to the success, excuse me, success of this EJ element is implementation. We've had a number of conversations internally about the best way to do this, and frankly, what we see is a need to embed this thought process of environmental justice into the county's regular practices and processes. This affects how we engage with the people we serve and how we prioritize those programs and improvements in the communities. We see a need for an annual stakeholder meeting, continued community engagement. This would ideally be occurring at the beginning of each calendar year, where staff would engage with community members, community-based organizations, all the stakeholders who have an interest, to identify what their priorities are in their community, what they need. That would be reported back internally to an executive-level working group with various department heads who have a role to play in implementation of these policies and objectives. Obviously, our long-range planning staff has a role as well, so we have some responsibility to implement the general plan. All of these culminate in an annual report card on implementation. You're familiar with the annual report that we do on the general plan in the spring of each year. We see this annual report card being a component of that. And the annual report would also demonstrate the effectiveness of these policies and implementation measures, as well as identify potential new priorities on an annual basis. Moving forward into CPAC review, we took this Phase Two Environmental Justice element to the five CPACs that you see on the slide here. All but one recommended approval, and the one that was recommended for denial in Carmichael, the reason for their recommendation for denial was a desire to see more specific policies and implementation measures that would potentially limit how we interpret or identify priorities for action. They weren't necessarily opposed to the element itself, they just wanted to see more specificity. At the Planning Commission, back in October, there was unanimous recommendation for approval to the board. And I do want to clarify one misstatement in the board letter. I think we characterized the testimony from Sacramento area congregations together as supportive of the fresh produce in convenience stores. SAC Act has not taken a position on that. That was a mistake on our part, so I just want to let the record reflect that. So finally, the recommendation today is recognition of the exempt status of this request for SEQA purposes, and then adoption of the attached resolution, which amends the general plan to include the Phase Two EJ element, the supporting research document, as well as the multiple changes in the other elements of the general plan, subject to the findings in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. Before we get to public testimony, I see that Supervisor Peters has a question.
Thanks, Todd. In the CPAC voting results, you mentioned, you talked about Carmichael and the denial. Arden Arcade was an approval, but it was very close, four to three. So what was the dissent there about?
The concern there, it was a very robust discussion. Some members felt that some of these policies had an anti-business sentiment to them. Staff's position is that they do not, there's nothing in here, from our perspective, that would disincentivize business, or development, or investment in the community. We see it as an opportunity to improve some areas in the community.
Did any owners of the small markets testify at CPAC? I mean, I'm wondering where somebody buys carrots and lettuce. Are they going to go to Save Mart and buy the vegetables and then bring them back into their store? I mean, because they can't buy in any quantity. For instance, that's...
That's a good example. No, at the Arden Arcade CPAC, there weren't any small business or small convenience store owners in attendance, or that I recall at any of the CPACs.
So nobody talked about how they would...
Correct.
These markets could possibly, could get to these fresh fruits and vegetables without buying them for retail?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Todd, I trust the Planning Department has been in receipt of some of the comments coming in via the Board of Supervisors portal site.
That's correct.
And I know we're going to get, you know, verbal comments today. We've had, you know, a couple of pieces of correspondence, but there were comments submitted by President Betty Williams of the Greater Sacramento NAACP relative certainly to the environmental justice element, or supporting the adoption of the Phase Two element, but they also raised some issues in their correspondence as relates to the crime prevention through environmental design, referred to in short as SEPTED principles. If you had a chance, this just came in this morning, I don't know if you've had a chance, and maybe that came up in the course of some of the outreach that was done, that you, you know, identified in your overview of this, but I, you know, there are any number of points here that certainly, I guess the essence of it being, though, that some of those, by design, in the built environment, could actually, you know, I think in their words, be exclusionary to others in the community. And I guess I'm just curious about whether that's something that, you know, is planning staff or in consultation with others that have been working on the element. Has that come up? Has there been discussions? And they go through in quite a bit of detail, so I'm not going to, there's a letter obviously here to comment on some of the text in the document, but...
So, this communication this morning was the first time that staff has seen this.
Okay.
It has not, this level of detail has not come up as part of our discussions over the last 18 months. From staff's perspective, we do not disagree with some of their suggested edits. For example, SEPTED being an avenue to enhance residents' quality of life? Absolutely. I am not personally knowledgeable about some of these details that they're speaking about that are identified as being adopted and implemented in the greater Sacramento County.
Right.
I'm pretty sure our design guidelines don't speak to some of these details.
No, I know the design guidelines don't, but I think if some of the, the physical improvements might very well, because by design, I think some are designed to address certain activities that may be of a nuisance and/or a criminal nature, but nonetheless, I mean, they raise these points. I just was curious, because again, they go through in quite a bit of detail, they're not all from a planning perspective. Some relate to a policy framework for elected bodies and others who would carry out certain, you know, ordinance and so forth. But, so how does this get rolled into, because even though it was received just this morning, we're having a hearing here today, certainly in my review of the documentation and some of the, you know, meetings and discussions I've had, didn't go to this level of detail, nor did it raise some of the issues here. And whether one agrees or disagrees with them, they're certainly worth considering. So how does this get, I guess, rolled into today's conversation, besides the fact we've received it, we may talk about it, ask you a question or two, because it's, I guess, kind of late, but it's not too late. So that's my point. So how, how would this get addressed? Because again, some of these things are already in effect, others may not be, but if we're going to cement them in a general plan element with the environmental justice element...
So there's two schools of thought in my head. One is, the context that we're talking about is the general plan element that typically a general plan does not go into this level of detail, that subsequent detail could be captured in, for example, the zoning code or design guidelines as part of an implementation. And frankly, this is one of the challenges that we've struggled with as we've gone through this process, a desire to see more detail, but trying to keep it within the context of a policy framework in the general plan, where we have subsequent opportunities, whether it's strictly land use or planning-related, or other departments, or within the county that might have some responsibility. So I think if we focus on the desired outcome, which I think we can generally get from this comment letter from NAACP, that would help inform how we implement over time, and maybe we can tackle some of these points along the way.
More discrete issues, yeah.
Yeah.
That helps. The other thing I wanted to just ask about, because I think it's certainly in reference to, you know, the work that you did on the ground, both in the pop-up events, but certainly in the community outreach, and having an open survey on the website and such. And again, in my conversations in the last week or two with folks, you know, as it goes to implementation, obviously, there's, you know, certainly interest, and we'll hear from folks about that today, about how it gets implemented, what gets implemented. But I think the ongoing piece that I wanted to ask about, I guess, how it gets built into, you know, moving forward, is that this participation, which again, you know, was a fairly extensive effort, where does funding lie for that? Where does support for that? Because again, I got to imagine that as you, one, begin to do measures regarding how we're doing, you've got this aligned with, I guess, the planning period being the 10-year, over 10-year period, but there's going to need to be some measures, I think, evolve over time, to your point, and respond to my last question. What's the plan for that? Again, you don't control all of that, but I guess I'm curious, is, you know, what's your thoughts about that?
So my initial thought, and we kind of summarized this in the board report, is that implementation will be challenging. There's no question about that. It will take a change in how we, as a county, deal with community engagement, identifying priorities, setting priorities, and carrying through. We're seeing, just in the planning world, a whole host of new grant opportunities opening up at the state level that really hit on housing, climate change, and EJ. In fact, we were able to get one of those in one of our EJ communities that we're starting to implement now. So to the extent that we can go after those outside funding sources, that helps us implement. Some of those programs also don't require a local jurisdiction to be the sponsor, so to speak. They are available to community-based organizations, and we can't do this as staff alone. It will take partnerships with those organizations and those folks on the ground in each of these communities. So we see implementation being a multi-pronged approach. Again, not just staff saying this is what we're doing, but first seeking what is the most desirable priority in each community on an annual basis.
Yeah. I just, I guess, final comment at this point, that I think that that linkage with your community-based organization is going to be essential to, you know, I think, you know, robust implementation, but certainly, I think, the ability to reach folks, to see, you know, not only take the temperature from time to time, but also to know better, where, and even organizationally, if they're reading the community, they're not going to know the entirety of the community, in the sense of big geography that's in the unincorporated area, and certainly the areas that are described geographically here in the, in the plan. But I think that's going to be, you know, a really important piece, and I guess I would just suggest that, I think, certainly within our human services, social services network, we've, you know, had longstanding partnerships, bless you, with, you know, with folks that, you know, helped organize the community, but also deliver your services, to help us develop and implement programs. And I think looking at some of those models, if, I trust you're aware of them, and probably others in the Planning Department, but I would say that, you know, with some seed money and, you know, good outreach, that it helps get beyond just having a community meeting or a pop-up event, you know, because you're only going to capture a certain sense of the community from those that you encounter there, and it may be a correct one or not, but I do think that, you know, being able to, you know, get deeper into the community through those who reflect the community makeup, you know, whether it be ethically, socioeconomically, culturally, whatever it may be, that it's going to be important, I think, to, you know, to build those partnerships and recognizing there may be funding opportunities, but I think they're going to be key and critical to accounting as diverse as this, but one that, you know, we hope to see neighborhoods and certainly communities throughout thrive and prosper, and, you know, recognize the identity of those communities, and, you know, the contributions to the, you know, to the quality of life here in our county as a whole. So I guess I would just, you know, encourage us to, you know, and not just you as the current lead on this, but others, to, you know, really begin to, you know, look at how we can, you know, and again, it may be a slow process, a slower walk to begin with, but I think, you know, that will help strengthen our community, but also it strengthens that relationship between the electeds and those policymakers. relationship between the electeds and those policymakers, and certainly those that are professional planners and others in implementing this. I think it just, it serves, you know, multiple purposes in a positive way. So, again, I'm sure you've had some ideas, and some of it will require money, but not always, and I just think that's going to be really important to keep those threads into the community and make them, you know, good, strong lines of communication, but also of exchange of information, and to help carry out implementation, because some of this is going to be done at the community level. You know, we can pass out ordinances and resolutions here and provide incentives or disincentives, as it may be, but it's still going to lie within the framework of the communities a lot of times to see to it that really, you know, that they're done in a way that I think reflects, you know, good use of people's time, but also gives the opportunities if you're looking for it under the environmental justice umbrella. So, I just, but I compliment the work here. I know it's been, you know, been a while coming, but I would just encourage those community partnerships. Thanks.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions myself, Todd. First, I want to thank you and all the staff for working so diligently on this important addition to our general plan, which, as many know, is functions as our constitution for many things, not the least of which is how we grow and develop in Sacramento County, and really is the cornerstone of all the planning documents that we work with and that the public counts on to help guide us from a policy standpoint when it comes to making important land use, transportation, and now environmental justice decisions. One of the questions I had was, had to do more with some of the language used in the document, and I don't know if it's a function of the legislation that introduces the requirement for local jurisdictions, municipalities, and counties to have an environmental justice element in the general plan, but there's sprinkled throughout, especially the introduction section, there's this reference to environmental hazards. And I'm not sure why the term environmental hazards, which I think most people can understand what an environmental hazard is, why is that specific term used versus something like environmental conditions? Is there legislative, is it in statute that that's kind of the subject matter of the element versus environmental conditions, which is kind of a broader catch-all in my estimation?
I think part of it is identifying, so the multifaceted components of EJ, when we're talking about pollution exposure, for example, we, as a planner or environmental analyst, we tend to think of things as pollution-related from exposure to a hazard, environmental hazard. That's probably the lens that we put on it, just as a matter of practice. It's an interesting point that you raised, though, about shifting our perspective. That's good feedback to have. I don't think there's necessarily a direct link to the statute, if that's your concern.
Probably a difference with some distinction, kind of a thing, but to me, you know, hazard is putting somewhat of a finer point on there being some very real, and again, not to diminish the fact that there are some very real health hazards, but that's what comes to my mind, is when the term hazard is used, is that we're always thinking, and in this case, planning, in the context of what is hazardous to the public's health, and certainly that's part of it, but I think a lot of this is also really speaking to the conditions that tend to plague disadvantaged communities and that aren't necessarily health hazards. I mean, it could be something as, you know, seemingly benign as graffiti versus pollutants, versus criteria pollutants in the air, for instance.
There's the more technical side versus the softer science side.
Yeah. And I'm not suggesting that we spend all afternoon wordsmithing this one-inch document, but I just wanted to get some clarity on that. And then the other, the other question I had, again, kind of in the realm of verbiage, is procedural inequities. I've seen that term used pretty liberally here, too. Can you explain what procedural inequities are?
Sure. A procedural inequity in the way we've tried to think about this is, I think Supervisor Natoli alluded to it a little bit, although maybe not knowingly. When we have our community meetings, for example, our CPAC meetings are held, for example, at a specified time in the evening, or even the planning commission, specified time, regular time, when some members of the community, due to circumstances beyond their control, are not able to attend, whether there's socioeconomic issues, say the single parent working two jobs, that, those types of issues are presenting a barrier to public engagement. So, that's a procedural inequity, which may lend itself to not having a complete set of information to the decision-makers.
Okay. I mean, it seems like it's going to be one of those terms that after perhaps years of having a environmental justice element, and it becomes much more the kind of vernacular lexicon of, you know, the public and the planning community, and certainly elected decision-makers, it becomes something that is easily inferred, but I just wanted to get some clarification on that before we acted today. Okay, so I know the, thank you, Todd. I know the public's been patient. I don't see anyone else from the board queued to ask questions or make statements at this point, so we are going to hear from the public. Again, I would ask those that have submitted speaker slips to please keep your comments to no more than three minutes, and that's in place so that everyone has a chance to address the board if they so choose. And we will start with Paul Philly.
Good afternoon, Chair Serna, members of the board. I am Paul Philly with the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District. For the past two years, the Air District has been supporting the county and its staff in putting together the Phase One and Phase Two environmental justice element for your general plan. At the same time, the state gave us a mandate as well, and we've been working on the Community Air Protection Program, and like you, we are early out of the gate in a lot of lessons learned and reaching to our different communities. And so, we've been focusing on improving air quality at the community level in historically disadvantaged communities that traditionally have often had a larger portion of the burden of air quality. As we're currently tracking air quality at a finer geographic scale in the community of South Sacramento and Florin, which is also one of your environmental justice communities, we want to commit that we're going to continue to work with your staff so that as that information becomes available, we can work to amend land use plans, funding plans, and the way we do business so that we can better address the issues that we continue to find in these areas. We really want to see continued collaboration between our agencies and our community partners as we move forward, because that's what's going to make this basically a successful effort, we hope. So, thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you. Adrian Ren.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Serna and members of the board. My name is Adrian Ren. I'm an Oak Park resident. I'm also a member of the Steering Committee of the Sacramento Food Policy Council. Since 2014, SFPC, as we're known, has been at the forefront of advancing urban ag in our communities, as well as being creative in leveraging public arts funds to spread and boost CalFresh awareness. We've also been, of course, engaged with the EJAC throughout this process. And on behalf of the SFPC today, I am here to urge you to adopt the Phase Two environmental justice element and to look forward to, and we of course look forward to working with you to ensure that there is meaningful community engagement throughout that process, and ultimately to strengthening execution and impact. Our recommendations include more formal and inclusive community oversight, stronger implementation measures, and pathways to economic development opportunities for county residents. So, again, we look forward to continued collaboration to ensure an accessible and strong food system here in America's farm-to-fort capital. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Adrian. Michael Harris. Following Mr. Harris will be Matthew Bridges.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It is wonderful to be here at the end of this special year, celebrating the holy days, you know, Hanukkah start, I believe Friday, and then Christmas, and then Kwanzaa. But if you go back 170 years, when, you know, this was transferred from Mexico to the United States, there was environmental justice, and William Leidestorf, in his Mexican land grant, said, hey, look, we're going to take care of the Native American here. And so, on this land, we say all of our relations, and for thousands of years, you know, environmental justice was at the seat at the very beginning of all the discussions. So, I'm very supportive of this. I mean, this is like, almost like ancient future, going back to where we were, to where we're going to go. I mean, in our conversations, we're going to look at how we're going to take care of maybe the ant, maybe the bee in environmental justice. I mean, it's very important. So, the $330 billion that's just been quantified by the California working landscape, and we say we're the farm-to-fort capital, that's not true. If you look at the data, we are the capital of the California landscape, $330 billion, but we are woefully negligent in looking at how we engage our community to be what it was, you know, in the beginning. You know, the fish, the canneries that are in Monterey, they, the fish came from here, you know, the salmon, and all throughout the watershed that we maintain custody of. When we look at the opportunities to marry agriculture and environmental justice, to create jobs, there's only 1.5 million jobs in the California landscape, only 1.5 million jobs. But the last time I looked at it, and I did, I need to look at the 60 pages a little detailed, trying to remember what Glenda Humm was telling me, I think we're number four in the regions of Sacramento, I mean, in the California Sacramento region, the farm-to-fort capital. So, we probably should change the A, you know, looking at the money, because we're nowhere close, and say, hey, look, we're just the capital with O, because we have the building down the street, the state capital, and look at how we can create urban agriculture as the hub for this region. And I say that because I can go back to 2002. My email is urbanagriculture@gmail, because USDA said there will be no urban agriculture in the urban service boundary. And I said, well, you probably have told the wrong person, so we're just going to fight and make this happen. And so, today is real. So, in the town, the region where I was born, we have an opportunity, a real opportunity, not just to speak with the NAACP, but actually engage with them year-round to create jobs in this community, so we won't have to spend a lot of money in the child legacy campaign after the fact. We could spend it ahead of the fact. So, I'll stop there. Happy holidays. I love you all.
Happy holidays to you. Thank you. Okay, Matthew Bridges. Following Mr. Bridges, and forgive me, is it Brenda Ruiz?
All right, good afternoon. My name is Matthew Bridges. I'm with the Sacramento Food Policy Council. So, I wanted to say thank you for hearing this agenda item today, for hearing our comments. And I want to reiterate that the most successful planning processes have really strong leadership, you know, especially when you're talking about environmental justice planning processes, they have really strong leadership and engagement from impacted communities. So, thank you Supervisor Natoli for uplifting that need to really look at ways that we can more formally engage with communities that are being impacted and have them guide the priorities going forward. So, it seems like, you know, right now, at least in Sacramento, we're not at that level where we have a strong, you know, community leadership contingent, at least, to guide this process, specifically around environmental justice. We've seen that in other initiatives here in Sacramento County, but we're not there yet with environmental justice. And I think part of the reason for that is lacking, you know, some of the infrastructure and resources to make that happen, because people need to feel empowered, they need to be invested in, in order to be put in a place where they can help to guide some of these processes. So, that could, you know, look like formal oversight bodies or commissions consisting of residents from these identified communities, which, you know, is something that we can work with you all on moving forward, and, you know, we would be delighted to work with you on something like that. I wanted to just touch a little bit on these food action plans. Supervisor Serna, I know that you've asked us for a little more clarity on what that would look like. So, they're often, you know, throughout the state, as well as the country, we've seen these food system assessment and action plan efforts to really, you know, holistically look at our food system and the opportunities and the strengths as well, when we talk about looking, creating jobs, and trying to steward a better environment. And there tends to be sort of a pattern, or not, these three major themes that emerge from these food action plans, which look at addressing the root causes of food insecurity, as I said, creating fair opportunity, economic opportunity for all in the food system, and ensuring a clean environment. And I want to just quickly highlight the Santa Barbara County Food Action Plan. It was an effort which was chaired by two county supervisors, and they received funding from multiple foundation partners, such as the, could I have just like an extra minute, potentially?
Sure.
Thank you. All right. And they were funded by multiple foundation partners, such as, I won't name them off, but it was like three or four. And when we look at like what the community engagement looked like for an effort like this, they did a lot of key informant interviews around 35, they did big, you know, three big community listening sessions, and they broke off into sort of thematic working groups and with residents as part of those working groups. So, it was like a whole structure of community engagement. And this is just specific to like what a food action plan could achieve, and then sort of build that momentum and the partnerships needed to really address some of the issues within the food system, to vitalize economically the food system. So, just to give you an idea of what that might look like, and I'd like to see something really similar happen for the environmental justice element, sort of as a whole, in terms of how we engage communities. So, right now, what we really need from you is a commitment to work as allies and partners to environmental justice communities. We need you as electeds to embrace a culture of community engagement and collaboration with community leaders specifically to address environmental justice and food access. I also want to make sure that I uplift and support other comments submitted by Sacramento ACT, the SAC Tenants Union, NAACP, and others. And again, really, really appreciate your support on this.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Is it Brenda Ruiz? I apologize because it's difficult to read the first name.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and Vice Chair Serna. First of all, I want, as President of the Sacramento Food Policy Council, I want to stand a thank you to all planning staff for all of your hard work. They were, they, all the community meetings that they conducted, both at the pop-up events and at the CPAC meetings, were very well attended, and we look forward to working with you more in the future. I also want to thank all of the supervisors for taking the one-on-one meetings with us in the last couple of weeks. I also want to take this time to draw attention to the November 15th letter that was sent to all staff and boards. There are specific recommendations particularly to implementation, and we look forward to working with staff on realizing those recommendations. And I think Supervisor Natoli pointed out in all his wisdom that there will be lots of funding needed for this, and we anticipate that all departments and staff will be very conscientious in putting into their staff budgets FTE time for dedicating to EJ discussions and serving on those special select committees or the different leadership panels that they will be forming hopefully in conjunction with the community. So, our ask of you guys as the elected leaders is to make sure that they're including enough staffing time and enough support for EJ, so it isn't something that gets wedged in another meeting in a 12-hour day. So, we hope that you guys can give them that support, and we know that you guys have a budget discussion beginning in the new year. We'd also recommend more than one stakeholder, more than one annual stakeholder meeting, and I think on the front end, we'll need to do a series of those now that it'll be adopted. Obviously, we support adoption of this, of this EJ amendment in the Phase Two. And I think the first phase will be more continuing on educate, more continuing education on what it is that was just passed, what does adoption mean, and what, and so that first set of discussions might be more onboarding on what this could look like, and then subsequent meetings, and I think in our recommendations, we recommend... meetings, and I think in our recommendations, we recommended four annual, which is a big lift. The measurables will be important, and we look forward to partnering with staff, and as well as more individual conversations with you guys on what that can look like. I'm really excited. I think this is gonna be great for us, and we're one of the few counties that will be adopting the first-ever food element in the EJ, in their EJ commitments. So, congratulations, hopefully you'll pass this, and we're excited for what's in future for Sacramento County. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Bailey.
Yeah. We have it. We have it.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name's Christine Bailey, and I'm with the Sacramento Act Environmental Justice Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, and thank you to county staff for the open, transparent process, and their commitment to increasing community engagement. Sacramento Act is a nonpartisan, multi-faith, multiracial grassroots organization representing 60,000 families in Sacramento. Regarding environmental justice, in West Arden Arcade, we have spoken with about 150 residents, worked with county staff to extend their online survey to about 180 people, held a listening, a listening session, and discussed these issues with stakeholders. We sent you a letter, and I'd like to speak to a couple of our recommendations. First, we strongly support updating plans for environmental justice communities, whether it's, we don't know whether it should be a community plan, or a specific plan, or a community objectives plan, or, we don't know the exact one, but it should incorporate economic development, affordable housing strategies, and multimodal transportation. Some investment of community resources would be needed to do this, but this could be leverage to get a large return on investment, because these plans would show specifically what these communities need, and make us much more competitive for the many state and regional funds available for disadvantaged and underserved communities. We think this is an opportunity to actually hit a triple with this kind of community planning. A good environmental justice community plan can look just like a good community plan to address climate change. Such plans can address affordable housing, environmental justice, and climate change as the, at the same time, it looks at economic development in the community. Second, we strongly support amending the county code to establish business license for convenience markets. And the community members have told us in the past, they in the county wanted to deny building, let another liquor store a convenience market, only to have the state step in and override. When we met with residents of West Arden Arcade, that their top priority was enough affordable, safe, and sanitary housing and eviction issues. We've made some comments in our letter, and we look forward to addressing these issues in the housing element in 2020. We also look forward to working out the important implementation issues. I know Matthew is starting to think of some ideas regarding how we could structure that, because it's kind of complicated, a lot of people and things are involved. And I, we support Brenda Ruiz's recommendation to fund staff to work on these environmental justice issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Here, our final speaker is Mr. Frederick Gale.
Frederick Gale, 7336 Hurland Way, North Highlands, a resident approximately 50 years. And I wasn't prepared for this, but I feel like I'm on the Flying Dutchman.
Flying Dutchman?
Yes, the Flying Dutchman.
Okay.
And this seemed to be an American dilemma, also Grunberg doll, but I didn't realize I was as poor, disadvantaged as what I see in this report. And as for the CPAC, I have no contact, and some of these other presentations that supposed to have been made, I'm not aware of it, and I thought I was. I've been active in the community for, as long as I've been here, school boards, water district, fire department, et cetera. But I would like for you to not rush to judgment so fast. I would like to have something prepared when I come here for the next meeting. Just aware of this, I can expect to come into this, but I live in North Highlands, 7336 Hurland Way, for the last 50 years. And I would like to have something prepared, and have a lot of time to go through this, some of the acronyms I'm not aware of, even if I was a mechanic, engineering, and all that kind of stuff, I did in McLeod, procurement analysts, et cetera. But I appreciate that I'm aware that I'm in such a terrible neighborhood now, after all these years. I thought I had a pretty reasonable place, but, thank you very much. But I hope that we can put it back on another agenda, so maybe more people can get involved. Of course, I'm not aware of any of the people I see who are speaking, but that doesn't mean anything, and thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Gale.
Of course.
Okay, that concludes our public testimony. I have some questions for staff, they're procedural primarily in nature. And I'm not sure who wants to address the questions, but, and it kind of dovetails nicely after our last speaker. What is, is there an urgency that we have to finalize this today because of some clock that's fast expiring?
The only, I wouldn't say there's any urgency per se. We do have, we have met the letter of the law in adopting Phase One. Our goal in adopting Phase Two was to get this obviously adopted, so we can try to move forward with some of the important issues that some of these folks have spoken about in implementation. In terms of a timeline, there's, I think we're only bound by the timing of the general plan round.
And then, my other question was, because I don't know that I heard it in the presentation, staff presentation. Anytime that a new element is being introduced to a general plan, whether it's a voluntary element or a mandatory element, there's, there's two principal exercises involved. There's one to make sure that you have, harkening back to planning school, vertical consistency and horizontal consistency. So you have consistency between the elements in the, the plan document itself, and you have consistency with its brethren documents, the zoning code and whatnot, that have to legally be in consistency with the general plan. I know that the recommended action is noting the other elements, and how they've been amended, and incorporate the intent of this newly, newly introduced element. But have we really gone through, do you feel very confident that we've gone through to make sure that those other equally important planning documents are now adequately referencing this, you know, greater, this bigger general plan to include consideration for environmental justice?
I would say yes, we are confident in that, to the extent that some of the policies or implementation measures speak to amending the zoning code, for example, as one potential pathway. There is work to be done to implement. Our challenge is identifying those subsequent steps without a clear definitive action by the board on either support or not supporting the proposed policies and implementation measures.
All right. Supervisor Frost?
Yes, Leanne, you mentioned that this would position us for funding opportunities. Can you describe what some of those funding opportunities are, and what the money would go toward?
Sure. Well, the one that Todd Smith referenced in the presentation was a grant that we've successfully received, and are just getting the money now to do a re-envision West Arden Arcade planning effort. So we're just about to embark on that, and that had an environmental justice community component. I, I actually recall, don't recall which department, I want to say it was the Ag Commissioner spoke the other day, I could be misspeaking slightly, but they had used, they were applying for a grant, and the adoption of our first-phase environmental justice element and the inclusion of environmental justice into that grant helped them be successful in that grant. That was by another department completely outside of the planning realm. So we do see that showing up in a variety of ways through the state funding, and we think there are a lot more grant opportunities ahead, given the adoption of this element.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff?
Yeah, just quickly, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of information contained in the report, and I think what I found very interesting beyond, obviously, data from state or federal or other local sources, was responding to comments, you know, and they came in through a variety of portals to, from community meetings to the survey to the pop-ups and so forth. And I think that in and of itself is a, a good gauge of, you know, what's on people's minds, and obviously there are topical areas that were, you know, prompters that, that helped people to focus a bit. My comment is then, and I think in my briefing yesterday, I want to be sure that on that list of, to your point just a moment ago, you know, the Ag Commissioner, make sure that the UC Extension services are included, because again, they have programs that address, you know, gardening and food preserving, and certainly have, you know, programs for youth for the 4H and such. I just think it's, it's important to make sure they're a part of the conversation right from the get-go. I guess what I wanted to ask about, though, you know, you cover a variety of areas of importance, and I guess many of them are contained in state law. With implementation, is there a priority then for implementation, and or how's that gonna be sorted out? Is that what the work we're gonna do with the community is to, you know, some of these are, you know, using the analogy of low-hanging fruit, obviously, or things that could be done that can encourage, they fall in the policy framework, others require, you know, private sector and/or the nonprofit community to be partners when it comes to some of the community health and so forth. But what I think about streets and conditions of blight, if that's the case, and such, so would we expect that with some annual report, or even more frequently in, in early years, that we get a chance to kind of mark progress in some way, so we know beyond what you bring to this board, but, you know, that community framework in which we're gonna be operating, so?
So I would say there's probably two ways to think about the priorities for implementation. One, in my mind, is the internal education component, where we have to educate staff at all levels about what this means for how we do business in the county. The second part is the external, where we have to engage, as, as we, everyone heard, community engagement is an ongoing thing, it's not going away, and it can't, it shouldn't. We need to hear from the community what their identified priorities are, and focus on those on an annual basis. One of the challenges that you're probably familiar with is, we don't want to get spread too thin, such that we can't achieve anything. We want to have demonstrated progress on an annual basis, both to the communities that we serve, and to the decision-makers here. So I think it depends on those priorities that we hear from the community, and whether there are co-benefits in certain implementation measures, or specific programs, or projects that can achieve those, the desired outcomes that are identified in the legislation of reducing the negative health effects and turning into a positive outcome.
I'll be just, maybe just kind of in a, in a brief historical context, but I would, you know, compliment the planning departments, only this board over, you know, the past number of years, albeit state legislate, state legislation obviously interrupts or short-circuits some of the efforts at the local level, they, you know, they give us broad mandates and tell us, you know, you need to develop a plan, and then we look to implementation in some of these areas, and we become a bit stymied. But I want to just, in, in, in two relevant areas, where certainly planning staff and this board, I think through direction, and obviously this involves county executive, and law enforcement, and planning, and, and some of our other entities. One being that this board, early on, and has continued to, and I think even taken attempts to look at it more broadly, when it comes to, you know, ABC licenses, and the letters of public convenience, and necessity, we struck the word necessity, we do it for public convenience, but we go through a very thorough process, and have required that for many years, and retained that decision right here at the board level. It hasn't been delegated to someone in some department, and/or given some administrative, you know, delegation. It's been retained here, and there has been any number of occasions, for any number of reasons, but some of them that certainly fit within the environmental justice category, whether that was stated or not, is relates to proximity, to, you know, certain areas of concentration for young people, or other gatherings, a constant, you know, the concentration, calls for services relates to other activity, whether it be criminal or nuisance activity. And I just think that's been longstanding, and I know the planning department, certainly along with the county executive's office, others have been a part of that, and have brought us good information, and we've had many discussions for many hours in these chambers. Another one I just wanted to call attention to, and again, it may be small, but I think it's certainly built into the, you know, food policy, food access piece of this, and that, you know, it's been some years ago, and I think I recall, when we marked the first one, we're actually part of the conditional use permit process we required, some fresh foods be available in addition to what you might otherwise find in a convenience store. And I think we've had a discussion here at the board, and again, in subsequent discussions, it may be required, but oftentimes it's now being volunteered, because I think people hopefully recognize some consumer sentiment, but also, I think the fact is that, you know, beyond those convenience items, you know, whether it be chips and sodas, or candy bars, and then other things that they build into the matrix of their business plan, is that there needs to be some access. And in talking with some of the folks from the Food Policy Council representatives, you know, how that's displayed, where it's at in the store and so forth, and recognizing there may be some spoilage, but the idea is to have that available to folks that may come in and patronize those particular premises. And so, you know, there's a lot of else embedded here, but I just want to compliment, because again, I look, certainly looking at you, Leanne, but I know that, you know, planning staff, different levels, over the years have, you know, worked on that, and brought to this board, obviously, for consideration and approval, and sometimes on an individual basis, sometimes more broadly on a policy basis. And I think the work that's reflected here is, you know, a good Phase Two, but, you know, obviously, a lot of work is here, it doesn't all fall to the planning department by any means, but I find it encouraging, and certainly thank the community for their engagement and support, and I'm sure they'll be, you know, prodding all of us to, you know, to do more, do it faster, but I think this is, you know, certainly a, a good place to be from the standpoint of what we want to reflect in our community, particularly in the unincorporated area. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for that. I was gonna add, as another example of, in Todd's answer, he spoke to looking for opportunities when we're working on other items. Your board recently heard some potential changes to the community planning advisory councils. Obviously, we haven't completed that work yet, but buried in that myriad of that large package was a component that really came through from the environmental justice element process, which was not just notifying property owners, but also adding notification at the community planning advisory council level to tenants as well. So that is one small change I don't think we focused on in that hearing process, but that was also in that CPAC item as an example.
Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I wanted to ask if, and there's a number of questions that were asked in the various neighborhoods, and I'm sure you have, you're letting the various departments know that might engage in these activities, you know, what, what the public is saying, but I wanted to make sure the Sheriff's Department was notified, too. I see a lot of comments in North Highlands and 95842 New Fodell Farms about not feeling safe, and it's a, there's a great deal of comments there, and I want to make, I think, maybe a meeting with the North Area Commander would be appropriate.
Absolutely. I didn't mention it as part of my presentation, but we actually had staff from the Sheriff's Department serving on the Environmental Justice Advisory Committee, so, but absolutely a follow-up is in order.
Do you know that it went from the committee people to the boss?
That I will follow up on.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, again, want to thank everyone who took time out of their busy schedules to be here to testify in person, and certainly those that also did likewise in writing to petition the board on this important matter. This, for me, is a milestone moment, because this is an important, not just an important exercise to go through, but is, I think, represents an important advancement in terms of how we, how we're gonna be thoughtful in the future about how we plan our communities here in Sacramento County. As a member of the California Air Resources Board, I can tell you that environmental justice is a very, very critical part of our consideration in terms of almost any, anything and everything that we do, whether it be rulemaking, or otherwise implementing important legislation when it comes to reducing greenhouse gases and criteria pollutants, but it's really good to see that. that we do, whether it be rulemaking or otherwise implementing important legislation when it comes to reducing greenhouse gases and criteria pollutants. But it's really good to see that we're going to have another tool in the toolbox to, to help us really gauge and guide our ability to be thoughtful in terms of the future of Sacramento County. So with that, I believe we are now ready to entertain a motion.
I'd move both Items 59 and 60 and the general plan pieces of that, including any other recommendations on Item 60.
Chair will second. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Great, thank you.
Now you have your county executive comments.
No comments.
Okay. Any board comments?
I have an adjournment.
I know we have another one as well, so if there's no comments, then we'll, we'll take Supervisor Peters' adjournment first and then Supervisor Nataula's. If you could please exit chambers as quietly as you can, we still have a tail end of a board meeting. Appreciate that.
Okay, I would like us to, today, to adjourn in memory of Robert A. Ryan, Jr. On Sunday, December 15th, our former county council, Robert Ryan, passed away. For many of us, he was the sage, profoundly known for his wisdom, judgment, and experience. Unlike many lawyers who sometimes act like ancient oracles dispensing ambiguous or obscure advice, Bob Ryan did not. His advice was concise and to the point. Many times after a long question from one of us, he would say yes or no. There was, we didn't get the long lectures back.
Not too many maybes either.
Yeah, no maybes in there. It was yes or no, can't do it, yeah. He was a graduate of Stanford Law School and received his undergraduate degree from the University of Notre Dame, and he was a big fan of the Notre Dame football team, I recall. He retired from county service in 2012, and for many of us, his retirement represented the end of an era. Not only had he been county council, he was also interim county executive for a period. He was, in my view, the gold standard for city attorneys and county councils. Something lesser known about Bob is that when he, that he is, was an award-winning artist. He painted still life, landscapes, figures, and more contemporary works in oils, and his work has been shown nationally. He began painting, we had, after he had a bicycle accident and his mobility was limited for the better part of a year, and he fell in love with it, and he got formal instruction here in the United States as well in Europe. And after his retirement, he pursued painting full, full-time. He was Sacramento County's true Renaissance man. If you want to see his art, I'd say look at robertryanfineart.com. There's amazing work there. He had around 30 juried shows. He was a quick study, I guess you would call that. He just started it six, seven years ago. He survived by his wife, Michelle Bach, and I'd like the board to adjourn today in memory of Robert Arthur Ryan, Jr.
Yep. I want to also do an adjournment, but just would mention, I would thank Susan for her thoughtful comments and just note that, you know, again, all my years certainly on this board, but prior to, because he served for county council, I think going back to 90, 92 was when he first, huh?
94.
94, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, but was with the office, and as Susan said, he was just, you know, he was a go-to person, and I can't think of how many times over the years that, you know, referenced him as just someone who you could go to as a board member, but certainly we as a board, and he served this county very, very well, and, you know, that kind of innate talent that he was able to bring out in, in retirement with the painting is just, you know, fabulous for him, but certainly I was very saddened to hear the news. I know this community will, will miss Bob, and certainly sends our regards to Michelle. I wanted to also then, in addition to the adjournment for Robert Ryan, to also note another community leader who passed away just a bit before Thanksgiving, November 23rd, and that was Lynn Robey. Lynn Robey was former city councilwoman for the City of Sacramento, served from 1979 to 1982, but she was a, very much a part of a core group of folks that I think in the, you know, mid-1970s and on through to certainly many decades, you know, came to, you know, civic life and served in elected capacities. I know a very good friend of hers obviously served on this board, Ila Collin, Marianne Rudin, and others who served in different capacities in the city and county in many ways. And Lynn was a, by profession, a nurse, and as I said, and first elected, served then city council district aide in 1979. She had an inimitable giggle or laugh, you know, when something tickled her that, you know, you would, you would know it, and again, if you were in a room and knew, knew that, you could pick her out of the crowd very easily. But she also had, you know, a very strong commitment to neighborhood preservation, to neighborhood improvement. She represented, you know, Greenhaven Pocket area, some of the South Sacramento areas for many, many years, and worked very hard for, you know, community improvement, but also as some of those areas were growing, I know was very attentive to, you know, community development and making sure that good planning was reflected both in the neighborhood construct but also in the, in the, you know, business districts in, in the city of Sacramento. She also served for a quarter century on the board directors of what was then known as Sacramento Emergency Housing and now Next Move Sacramento, and leaves behind her husband, who again, in his right, has served his community very honorably as well, Ron Robey, who is Superior Court Judge, and together they had two children, Todd and Melissa. But I just would note that I think her love and concern for this community were, you know, revealed certainly in her service as a member of the city council, but I know that long after she left the elected office, she continued to be involved in community life in so many ways, and I consider her certainly a good friend and certainly a good friend of this community, and I know that, again, her loss and her passing is felt by many, many in the community, and she leaves a very strong imprint in her work in elected capacity, but obviously just her community involvement over many decades in this community. And so, you know, again, I would just say our hearts and thoughts and prayers go out to, to, to Ron and to the rest of the family, and we thank Lynn for her service, and certainly we'll remember her always in the landscape and certainly in some of the accomplishments that she, in working for the Betterment Community, she leaves behind.
Great, okay. Thank you, Supervisor Nataula. So again, please let the record reflect that today, Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, this Board of Supervisors for the County of Sacramento will adjourn in respect and in reflection for the legacies of Robert Arthur Ryan, Jr. and Lynn Robey. We adjourn.